Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluffing these four of all tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his bluffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure ace high, like ace high has some show down value at ace five. And when he raises the turn with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that, he actually gets called in on this kind of board. Like what, what hands do you have if you're folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some misdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo uh got away from it. Ooh, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise the seventy-five hundred, his ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with horse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. I thought call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raises. So this kind of falls back at it, bro.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamber for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse to fold. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future streams. And we, we were aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very good point, man. You're right, you're right, you're right.
That was the best dude to ever, you won.
You won, I, I, I just, yeah, I just.
Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this. You're not opening this.
London cut off, hi, decklejack, under the gun one.
Come on, I'll open it. I, um, so let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, it wouldn't be a quit.
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, this play.
I am going to cry if he says he's folding here. Like, if he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament, and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah, yes. I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three points score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold.
Right?
But you heard what he said. I'm off the table.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold, it says right here.
The excuses to open? If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K, I'm opening this, yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life.
Oh, that's hilarious. Hey, everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from King Queens? Who in the- Who does that?
What the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him. He's just coaching me.
Yeah, I agree, and I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my, my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through the things and, and so it's a good way to start your session for sure.
Alright, guys, this is it.
What's up, you wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Kowas playing about deep hitting about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very aggressive in this uh ten dollar buy-in. And here are the options to fold, to call, to raise twelve hundred, raise the- What? Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred, and my man's given options twelve and fourteen hundred hours. So it's already getting uh kind of spicy.
That's so nasty. To be on the site with these other crushers, you know, well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too, you know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh, all coaches on the site, so very highly respectable. Quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well, you know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He just have the ace of clubs in his hand. That's interesting though. I thought that was interesting.
How much you got? You didn't do that bad. Forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The back.
I agree, bro. I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one, so, you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know.
Calling, guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright, guys, we're checking, I guess. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise, and there's an anti-inplay, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward. You want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
I'm gonna go call with the armadillo hat.
Alright, and-
I would fold in game though, for the record, in case Assassin. We're winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
No, no, we can't win. This is a pretty rough spot, cause-
Damn it.
Mm-hmm. Where you gonna get my chat?
Get my chat.
They like, they like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do a, I can do a ten dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this, sorry. We'll do this, we'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man, and then, you know. We'll do it, we'll do it every week a couple times.
So, it's tie.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool, because we have two ties, and then a win from you and a win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even stevens.
This is awesome. I love it. Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner, my man Sevz, we're getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one. What up, guys? We're back, we're back, we're ready to roll, and no delay, study stream with my man Crazy Sixes. We're ready to party, we got it all loaded up, we're ready to go. Who's out there? Cap? I'm taking your request. Bombed in four seventy-three, not sure how long ago I took that one. Um, yeah, I'm down. I don't know if we've taken that one or not. Uh, that sounds pretty far down the list. I don't think we've taken that one at all. So absolutely. How you doing, Cap? Good to see you, Mar in the house. What's up, man? What's up? Sixes, are you there, my man?
What up, man? Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Awesome. Hold on, real quick. I hear like a weird feedback. Oh.
Sound good to me.
Oh, I know what it is. One second. Alright. I can hear myself. Alright, what's up, man? How you doing?
I'm doing good, man.
I know, I'm like looking around like, what can I do about it? But it's gone, whatever.
So we have a, we have a request for a quiz number.
Ooh, has this quiz been done by this person? Did, made the request?
Uh, they said that they bombed the hell out of it.
They bombed the hell out of it. This should be good. Which one is it?
Number four seventy-three, it's a little bit down the list. We haven't touched it yet. It's a Matt Affleck, twenty-six fifty online, so it looks like it's probably the Venom or the Millie or something.
Yeah, it's gotta be the Venom, right?
Yeah, or the Millie, right?
Oh, yeah, or the Millie at time, right?
Yeah. I'm down to do that one. I played this tournament, probably.
Oh, it's the one where you ran Kings early into the Ace King. I remember watching that game.
I don't know if that's this one or not, but that was one of them.
I remember that. That was so sick. Oh, man.
One of, one of the many, 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 many times in my career, I get stuck with Chris Morment on my right. He was on my right all time in that tournament.
That's always fun.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah-
I get some cool stories every once in a while, because I always seem to get these table draws where I get the worst table draw in history from a playing perspective. But from a fanboy perspective, it's always kind of cool.
Yeah, like, ooh, I get to where I get to battle with one of the goats, one of the greatest of all time, you know? How can this, where could possibly go wrong, you know?
He won.
Yeah, he usually does.
Alright, guys. Um, so welcome. Welcome to Poker Coaching Team. If those of you who haven't been here yet, we take these quizzes on pokercoaching.com, exclamation point PC in my chat, exclamation point PC in Crazy Sixes chat. Um, you can sign up. There's a free option. You should absolutely at least sign up for the free option. You get twenty free quizzes, you get a handful of homeworks. Um, you get to improve your game for absolute free. We do these every Saturday. Uh, New Eastern, to try and get better, try and show off the site, you know, to have a good time with you guys. We do giveaways at the end. I screwed up and forgot to run the giveaway last time. Um, so we'll do a double giveaway this time.
Yep.
And there you go. Cap's asking what states we're in. I live in Las Vegas, and my man Crazy Sixes lives in Ohio.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, you wanna give them a quick overview of the site while the new people are here? Because I would encourage anyone here, um, to sign up for free. Cause you get twenty free quizzes, you're gonna get access to some of the charts, the tools, the homework assignments, um, all this stuff for free. And then the premium membership is sick, because Jonathan does breakdowns of these big, you know, massive final tables. Uh, where he's coached some other players. I thought that value, uh, that content was amazing. And then, you know, all the other stuff that comes with the paid package, but the free stuff is just amazing, because you get twenty quizzes and then, you know, um, all the other access to the site, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, you know what's funny? Is I've been checking all these webinars too, and all of them a hundred percent free, and I went to four this week. Completely free webinars.
Yeah, they're amazing.
All of them dropped. It was amazing.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, cool stuff. Alright, my man, should we jump right into one of these things?
Uh, yeah, let's do it. Can you guys-
Four seventy-three is the one?
Anybody in my chat? Can you guys hear me? I know there's a few of us here. Sound good. Looks like it's fine. Nobody's complaining about it, so, uh, yeah, we can start with, what number? Four sixty-eight?
Four seventy-three.
Oh, four seventy-three, cause, oh, okay, I see. He's got two hands from that tournament. He's got one before, but, um, yeah, let's do it.
So already, the first thing I noticed is one, two, three, four, five, six options to start this hand. That's way more than usual.
Fold, call, raise to thirty-one, thirty-six, forty-two, and fifty.
And they're all like really close. So right away, Cap, I kinda don't blame you for bombing this, only because like there's so many options that are within, like thirty-one thousand and thirty-six thousand is, is a double difference of less than a blind.
Yeah, this is gonna be very interesting. I wanna kind of see something right from the jump. Um, so we have four hundred and seventy-two thousand divided by thirteen thousand. So we're starting this hand with thirty-six bigs at a position, and it looks like he's wondering if he should like the three-bet one. It's already, I feel like it's always kind of interesting with this stack depth in a hand like this, to know to three-bet fold, um, and the raise is coming from up front, so it should be interesting.
Alright, let's play the video and see what happens.
Yes, sir. Let's do it.
Alright, in this hand, uh, middle position is gonna raise to min. And fold to us in the small blind, we have ace three of clubs. Should we fold, call, raise to thirty-one thousand, raise to thirty-six thousand, raise to forty-two thousand, or raise to fifty thousand?
Well, it's worth sweet and easy. Let me get my calculator out here and do some math. Alright, so. What is thirteen thousand times my normal raise size should be something like three and a half, forty-five?
Alright.
Hey.
Alright, I'm back. I'm sorry I had to play it twice. More sound settings together. Um, so yeah, if we are gonna three-bet, uh, I certainly don't like using any of the smaller sizing. So for me, it comes down to, there's maybe just two options here, uh, forty-two, fifty, or three options, forty-two, fifty, or call. But I don't know, what does your chat think? What do they have in mind? What do you guys think in my chat? Anybody here?
Raising-
He said they didn't hear much.
I know, it's kind of low on mine as well. He just, I mean, there wasn't much to say, to be fair. He says this player opens to men from up front, and, you know, what is, what do we want to do? He didn't have any context into what kind of player he was. Or it's kind of unknown, from my understanding.
Yeah, there was no description of the player, and he just min-raised and said, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, um, I just checked my volume settings. I am pumped to the max.
Same here.
Matt saying, uh, pretty early position for the raise, that leans toward call. Um, definitely a, a decent argument. Kept saying call. For me, I tend to re-bet this more than I call out, uh, but I'm kind of in agreement with you that it's call forty-two or fifty. Uh, being that I'm at a position, three and a half is forty-five, so I'm gonna lean fifty if I'm gonna raise, so now I'm at fifty or call.
I'm at fifty or call as well. Like, I think if I'm gonna use a, a sizing here versus the early position raise, I would prefer to go a little bit bigger. Um, you know, I think calling is just fine with this hand as well. I maybe prefer to call with like ace five or something suited a little bit better. But, uh, because we don't make as many straights with ace three as we do with ace five, you know? The lower the ace, like ace two's gonna make less straights than ace three, is gonna make less than ace four, right?
Straights to the six.
Right.
Yeah, uh, Hook says flat calling, rebelling flop, if flop helps our flush, or if we flop top pair, chasing turn for two pair, otherwise letting it go, facing aggressive raise, post-flop goes up kick the box. Um, for me, um, I try to be really balanced in these spots, and I have like a distinct system for spots like this. Sometimes I'll flat. Um, depending on where the raise comes from, this is a little bit early, so like flat does not seem terrible to me. Um, but for me, I tend to three-bet like ace two and ace three suited, flat ace five suited, um, cause that's like the best crappy ace. Then three-bet six, seven, and eight, ace, six, seven, and eight suited, and then start mixing in with the upper suited aces. So for me, like, this is totally viable, three-bet, yeah. But calling seems totally cool too. Um. Hmm. How do we get in the head of Mr. Matt Affleck? Sixes, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I personally think maybe he's probably just gonna call here.
So do I.
Um, but it was simply, I mean, if we're looking at the table composition here, you know, this guy is raising in here, the big stack's on a button, so he may be less apt to get out of line. Um, you know, having thirty-six bigs here, uh, we have a decent, you know, we have a decent stack. Calling a bet and a half's not really gonna change our playability. We don't have to play in tough spots. This guy's raising up front, so, um, I wanna say call. I just think Matt's gonna prefer to play a smaller pot. But, um, I don't, you know, we don't know his game that well, only from what we know from the quizzes, right?
Yeah. Um, on the spot with a raise to the thirty-one K, we can fold to a jam. I mean, yes, but the problem with thirty-one K is like, you're just, at that point, you're just bloating the pot, you don't have any fold equity. Hook says he doesn't wanna blow up the pot.
He should be calling with his, yeah, he should be calling with his almost his entire range there, and we gotta play the hand at a position.
He should literally be calling with his entire range there, for that price.
Did he open with? I mean, for that price, he's gonna be getting over three to one, I think, thirty-one.
Um, so, but if I go to like fifty any jams, I can still fold.
Absolutely.
You know, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm absolutely folding. There's no question.
Right. So you're going fifty? I, I mean, I'm gonna lean, I'm gonna lean towards, this hand has decent playability, even, um, at this stack depth. At a position, he may not want to use this always as a three-bet bluff, like at full frequency versus some unknown here in this spot. Um, so I think he may call with this combo, especially if he thinks the opponent may be weaker that he didn't touch on yet, or had any information, but I think he would have let us know.
Yeah, uh, I hold him up. Welcome, buddy. Um, and Matt, yeah, it's just a matter of whether we wanna take aggro or passive line. Hook is arguing that, or debating healthily, not really arguing. Uh, that it's simple, just see it cheaply and reevaluate. You're wasting nine bigs compared to two bigs. My counter argument to that is that when you flat this, you're gonna burn two bigs way often, because you're gonna checkfold a ton of flops. When I three-bet this, I put him on his heels, and I c-bet, and he's gonna miss a lot of flops and checkfold a lot. Plus, he might even fold here, which gives me more than one way to win. Um, so it's a, it's a counter argument. Um, I think calling is totally viable, but re-betting to fifty K is absolutely a hundred percent doable too.
Ab- absolutely.
In-game, I would re-bet to fifty K a hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm probably like seventy, I mean, it's gonna depend, depend on a lot, on the opponent and the table composition. If I was sitting at a table and had this, um, you know, my first instinct would be to three-bet to fifty. But if we know anything about this opponent, that could easily swing my decision to call in some, in some cases. Or the table behind.
Two X, four times instead of three-bet, nine bigs, twenty percent of our stack, do that five times, hundred percent gone. Well, I mean, yes, except now we're getting the argument of then we're going into rejam ranges and things. I'm just trying to tell you, Hook, like, maybe you should open your mind up to some aggression, because three-betting to fifty K is definitely not a mistake. That's all I'm saying, man. Um, seven three X, puts us in forty-two range, yes, but Matt, we're out of position. Um, so does that. Uh, so which way we clicking?
Ah, I'm gonna go, what are you guys in my chat? I, I don't think I got too many people here yet, but what are you guys thinking in my chat? Anyone who's here, you have an opinion on the situation at hand? We raising, we calling, we raising to fifty, we calling, uh, obviously, nobody said fold yet, cause this hand probably wouldn't exist. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and think we're gonna take, um, ace three really sucks from EP. I'll probably, I'm just gonna go with fifty.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me double chat with the audiences and then, uh-
Yeah, cause I, I don't have-
Thirty-one K, I see Cap as a call. Alright, so I have two calls and only one raise. So I guess we're going call.
Alright, I'm gonna go fifty. Alright, let's do it.
Pump the volume. Let's go.
Yep.
Nice.
I think this is a very common mistake that I've made a lot, that I think a lot of people make, is they're just three-betting these low-suited aces. And we're playing about-
Booyah.
Is it about seventy-five big blinds deep right now? And these just don't play that well at these stacked depths. Um, we're looking for more of our hands that are gonna make top pair, good kicker, that we can play for stacks. And, you know, if we three-bet to fifty thousand here, the stack to pot ratio's gonna be about four to one, and we're gonna get ourselves in some very dicey situations. So I think calling, a score of ten, and, um, I think I would just pure call this combo. I've never folded, raising to fifty thousand, I gave a score of five. Forty-two thousand four, thirty-six thousand three, and thirty-one thousand one. And the weaker the player is, the more I would just call this combo. Call, and in terms of three-betting, I'd like to three-bet more with like ace eight suited, ace nine suited, ace seven suited, they're gonna make top pair more, and they have less like post-flop playability in terms of their, uh, ability to make straights. So I'd much rather take the pot down now. With those hands, they play better in a three-bet pot than ace three suited that wants deeper stacks. Big blind comes along, ten-five deuce rainbow, we're just gonna check this combo a hundred percent of the time to our opponents, three ways, we're never gonna lead here. Bill and seven bets twenty-one thousand, one hundred. Should we fold, call, raise to fifty thousand, raise to sixty-three thousand, or raise to eighty-one thousand?
Alright, hear me?
I hear you.
I like it. Uh, it makes a lot of sense, um, especially given he's re- opening from relatively early position MP1. So you can have a pretty strong range, and his range is gonna continue more so than if he's opening in later position. Is one of the reasons why he doesn't really wanna three-bet as much. I mean, he probably has less folds, the earlier position his opens are, so I, I like that concept. And he made a good point about the SPR being, you know, about four to one, and then we're just gonna be in awful spots when we bet, and stacks are gonna be weird on turns when he does call.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I don't disagree. Like, I, I, good, I was pretty solid, it was gonna be a call from him. Um, and three-betting was, three-betting to fifty was the second best option, even though it was only a five, middle of the road. I think part of it is like, you know, with that, you have to watch your c-bet frequency, and, you know.
Right, yeah, there's other factors at hand, but yeah, he just doesn't wanna put himself in an awkward spot like that. Not, I mean, he's using bluff combos, like he said, like ace seven, ace eight, ace nine. Um, so it sounds like he's gonna be flattening ace deuce through ace five, ace six might be a pull, but ace deuce through ace five, at least he's always flattening in this spot.
Yeah, and then ace eight plus, cause Matt's asking about that, is that, uh-
Yeah, it's just gonna make better top pair. It's gonna make at least top pair, you know?
Top of the aces at that point, getting up there.
Yeah, flop comes side high.
Flop, one for backdoor flush and a straight. Half-pot c-bet, uh, I think we raise here. What's the button? Uh, what's the bottom button?
Yeah, oh, here we go, I'm sorry, for my, yeah. Sixty-three, fifty, eighty-one, and I know what I'm doing here.
Cap says he three-bet to forty-two thousand. Um, yeah, so I don't blame you for three-betting that one, Cap. In-game, I probably would three-bet a lot there too. Um, I just think you have to slide the big out of position.
Yeah, we want our size to be bigger, so we, you have more fold equity versus a stronger range, especially from early position as well. But at the same time, we're just gonna be playing in hand at the position. I think you wanna use larger size.
So, what are you doing here? Calling, flattening? What's everyone doing?
Uh, I'm flattening. Yeah, I mean, I'm flattening. I don't think, I mean, he still has all the kings, queens, jacks, hands that, when we do check raise, he just comes over the top with pocket queens, and we don't even get to realize the equity. Um, you know, there's cards on the turn that may freeze him up, where if he does check, we can black, bet if we do get heads up. So I, I really like, uh, just calling here with this amount of equity. Cause he still has overpair and good tens. And another player's in here, we check raise, and then he's had flop to setter, you know, has five deuce suited, he just comes over the top pretty easy. So I, you know, he's gonna be checking his entire range as well, so.
Yeah, I, I actually a hundred percent agree. Uh, Hook says he's folding here, Cap says calling here, and this one a hundred percent we can't fold.
We can't fold.
We got a gut shot and over and backdoor flash, we can't, we can't fold right now.
To the nuts, you know, we got two, two draw me. Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I'm gonna call. If you go three-point-five X, it's about seventy-four K. I don't really wanna go eighty here. Uh, sixty-three definitely too small.
I think, I mean, if, if of all the sizings we would use here, if I were going to check raise, I think it would be sixty-three. Because if he does come over the top, you, you can't continue, and the whole object would be to set a price for us to get there, and for us to just fold out some of his king queens, king jacks, you know? Those type of hands that would just c-bet his ace queens, and then just give up. Even multi-way, so that would be the only purpose. I mean, we just set ourselves a better price, we're not burning eighty K when he does come over the top with overpair as well.
I can see that. Hook says, uh, gut shot is eight percent to hit, ninety percent don't hit, and a lay-on turn might be good. Kicker, really marginal and sticky. I agree. But then again, if he checks turn, we might be able to take it away later. So I'm pretty sure it's a call.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty-
He's ten-seven years way ahead of us, sure. Ten-seven is definitely way ahead of us.
I mean, he's, yeah, villain force and a- I mean, he's, yeah, villain force and have a lot of that kind of stuff.
Amount of turns and I might be able to take it away later. I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm playing devil's advocate. Um, so yeah.
Alright, yep, you got your answer lo- locked and loaded?
Yeah, I think we're calling.
Alright, same here, alright guys, we're calling the C.
Here, I think we have a couple of different options here, folding not being one of the options, that's a score of zero. Um, I think this is a great combination, check raise, I give a score of ten, sixty-three thousand four hundred. Eighty-one thousand, I give a score of four, fifty thousand three, calling at seven, it's close between calling and check raising, I think you can kinda mix both options. But since we have a backdoor club draw, we can continue a lot of clubs on the turn if we check raise. We obviously have the gutter to the, pretty much the nuts, we have an overcard. And I think people see that way too much here in the population, you're gonna see villain seven bet hands like sixes, sevens, eights, nines. He's giving us a great, like, he bet forty percent, so it doesn't cost us much to check raise here, we can make it sixty-three thousand and we're betting sixty. It only has to work fifty percent of the time, um, and we have a lot of equity here. And we have a lot of cards that we can barrel on the turn, so we get a lot of better asexes to fold, hands like pocket sixes, sevens. Um, maybe, uh, some weak fives that are betting for protection, so, yeah, I think I like check raising here. I call, calling is definitely fine, our hand's good enough to call, but I think I like check raising better. Turns in ninety diamonds, easy check for us, villain checks, and now it's on us, on the. After it checks through, should we check, bet twenty-one thousand, bet thirty-four thousand two hundred, bet forty-six thousand five hundred, or bet sixty-nine thousand two forty?
You ready? Yeah, so definitely couldn't let it go, calling. Uh, raising, so I would raise a flop and. Said sixty-three thousand is where.
Really soon, might be having muted. Damn, so it was close, so the score was close there, um. But I like this option, I, I personally might like this option better in a multi-way pot where I would assume ranges are gonna be a little, even though he's only going forty percent. And people see that too much, um, I don't mind this because when we do call, he just shuts down a lot of turns. And here, um, I'll let your chat answer, but what size does everyone like? Or does anyone like taking this showdown? What do you guys think out there?
Uh, we have Charlie's high, the show is right, man, yep, absolutely, I think the raise was absolutely right too. Now, put this very strict spot, Hoka says a raising turn, yeah, but he checked the turn, so he never has a ten, he never has jacks, he never has queens, he never has kings, he never has aces. And he's got a, oh, uh, better asex, king queen, things of that nature. And then maybe something like pocket sevens, um, so we're getting that to fold, and we're getting that fold right now by betting decently. So for me, that's gonna take out some of these small events.
Yeah, it's, for me, it's gotta be one of these two sizes, simply to make better ace highs fold. Um, he, uh, he would see that something like ace queen of spades, ace queen of hearts, ace queen of clubs, and the same combos and. Ace, king, ace, jack, um, as well, so, uh, with that being said, I think that makes up a lot of his range to plays this way. As well as some under pairs that might just bet once and think we have enough ten X that it can't get multiple streets. Um, so yeah, I would just wanna use the big bet sizing, cuz we call here, we have a lot of nine, ten suited, ten eight suited. I mean, we just have a shitload of good hands.
Yeah, and he's got, he showed weakness on the turn, we have to count, so I don't think those ace highs good enough for showdown. Uh, Marlon says maybe overbet the pot would be better as well, I wouldn't hate that, but that's not an option here. I'm really torn up between forty-six and sixty-nine myself, reason being is we're targeting air, right, we're trying to get air to fold for the most part.
So we don't need to really polarize our range either, so when we start going this big, it looks suspicious because. Villain knows his range really isn't strong enough to call, and when we go that big. When we play our hand like that, like, what are we really targeting that he can call with? So it looks even more bluffy and you will find yourself getting called, whereas if we use forty-six five, it kinda looks like a strong value bet, no same hands just. Would fold anyway, to a lot of bets, so we don't need to polarize as much, it's kinda how I feel. Which leads me closer to forty-six, but I like the extra fold equity of sixty-nine.
So like, I honestly, I would go like ninety-five in game and. Screw this guy, he's never calling, be done with it, but I can see the argument, we're, we're literally targeting mostly air. I guess he still has some eight X and some nine X.
Ace nine, ace eight, you know, he's somehow. Yeah, I mean, he could certainly have some nine X, you know, jack nine, king nine, and those hands aren't folding no matter what. But the range we're targeting, uh, is probably gonna fold to a pair, to a bet no matter what, you know, if it doesn't have a pair. Or the small under pairs, like five, uh, like fours can't call really, threes can't call really. So I'm, I'm really leaning towards forty-six.
I am too, kind of, uh, Cap says he's gonna have fewer asex combos here, so I don't mind getting a showdown with ace high, not having committed a ton of chips, here's the problem though. He's gonna have some nine X, he's gonna have some eight X, he's gonna have some five X, he's gonna have pocket sixes, pocket sevens, he's gonna have pocket threes, pocket fours. Um, and so like, we can get all that out right now, and almost assure Lee take this pot down.
Yeah.
Massive amount.
What do you guys think, and anybody in my chat?
Uh, Cap, if I bet sixty-nine thousand here, are you gonna call with pocket sevens?
Yeah, I mean, you just have so many, like, you backed into so many straights, two pairs and things like that, you know. Um, where a lot of our range from the small blind, we would have some queen, jack suited, that would call one bet with two overs in a backdoor flush draw. Queen, jack of hearts, king, queen of heart, uh, not queen, jack of hearts and some other shit, jack nine. I think we just go forty-six, I'm going forty-six, I really like that bet because it looks like we can be value betting an eight, a nine, or a ten. Um, and targeting, we, it looks like we want value more so than our range is more polar, but I like the.
I got a couple of checks, um. Marlon says sixty-nine, like, I, I really wanna click sixty-nine. I learned that, uh. Yeah, I wouldn't call, see, that's what Cap says, wouldn't call the seventy K for sevens, but we call the small bets. Hoka's gonna check too, I don't think we can check, I think it's checking here is a huge mistake, absolutely huge mistake, um, so.
I mean, he just has too many better ace highs.
I don't like the, the better sixty-nine, I want the full. I would say, we have no showdown value here, and, uh, I'm gonna click sixty-nine just cuz I'm being stubborn. I'm pulling the toe veto sixes.
He's doing it, alright, I mean, I've, I've been wrong every single, uh, part of this quiz, I haven't got a perfect score yet, so let's keep that. Nah, the first free flop, I got a five.
Oh.
Then on the flop, cuz I went fifty.
Oh.
And then on the flop, I got a seven.
I got a seven on the flop too.
Yeah, so this river.
This is gonna be the moneymaker, let's fire now.
Hundred forty-six five, I'm going for it, alright, boys, let's do it.
Two, oh, he likes the check, that's amazing to me.
Seem, you know, this is a pretty simple check, and I do think check is the best option, but. You know, trying to bet our opponent off hands like ace king, ace queen, ace jack, pocket sixes, pocket sevens, there is some value in that. So, give checking a score of ten, I think betting twenty-one thousand as a block bet. Score of seven, we're gonna be wanting to block bet a lot of tens, maybe some ace nine. We're, we're definitely gonna have some block bets in our range, uh, thirty-four thousand two hundred score five, forty-six thousand five hundred score three, and sixty-nine thousand a score two. At one point, I thought a big bet might be a good idea here, but our blockers are just awful. We don't really block any straights, you know, we'd wanna have a jack or a queen in our hand to block, uh, some pairs and straights. And because our blockers, we have an ace and those are the hands we're trying to fold out too, that's going against us, so I give up. Opponent has ace queen of hearts, and that's a hand we definitely could, would not have pulled the flop, we would have checked, ace queen of hearts would have called. But on the turn, we would have gotten, won the pot, so, the mistake was on the flop.
Interestingly enough, I take this pot down, putting on exactly what he had. Um, so that's frustrating, uh, he liked to block it. Um, I actually mildly, mildly disagree.
Interesting.
Yeah, honestly, I was just saying, I mildly disagree.
I, I do.
I mean.
I, I kinda do.
Matt, Matt Affleck, a crusher. Absolutely no question, not, not judging him as a player, but I win this pot both times. You know what I mean, like, I would have three bet this on the flop, I would have missed pot on the turn, I would have fucking bombed the river, I would own this pot on the river. I mean, we range them exactly.
Yeah, uh, I'm betting, I mean, I'm betting big this river just because, well, not, I'm betting at least. I almost disagree with the smaller bet, but, I mean, the check.
Smaller bet, just trying to get a hand like this to fold.
And I get that, and I, and I understand that, that's why I wanted to go with the value portion of that size and go forty-six to make. It look like more of a value bet bluff than a block bet. Because I don't think we need to block bet when his range, when he checks back turn, right, I don't think his range, we don't block queen, jack or anything like that, and I understand. Uh, we don't block some of the jack X and king, uh, those type of combos, we block the hands, we're trying to make fold. But I think he's still, his relative position and the way he's played the hand just feels a lot like ace highs or weak under pairs, so I would. Kinda target tho- that range, although he can back into something else. I don't know, yeah.
Problem with the twenty K is like now we're literally only targeting the other ace highs, and as you were talking, I was thinking like, what are the other ace highs? I mean, literally, it's only ace, jack, ace seven. Ace queen and ace king, right? Like, there's not that many of them.
I mean, ace four suited, he's always gonna open as well.
Sure, we split with that.
Yeah, but, yeah, um. Uh, yeah, I, I don't know, I think he, I think he, I think I would, I would wanna bet, uh, either sixty-nine or seventy, I, I, I don't think, in, in game. I'm rarely ever checking this spot with such little showdown, when he's checked the turn and we have a lot of. Hands that have made pairs or have a pair.
Yep, weak pairs, absolutely, Hoka says if we're gonna raise first flop, we must lead turn two thirds pot and possibly lead river two, yes.
Well, I mean, if we lead big on the turn after check raising and he calls that. I mean, he's just gonna take that same line with all his over pairs, like, what would we be trying to fold out at that point? Like, pocket sevens and eights would have folded, all the backdoor draws miss. You know, if he did have.
Do bet two thirds pot, narrow the range and give up on river?
I would say so, like, when we, I mean, he's still MP one, so he's gonna just call with all his over pairs.
Yeah, it's not like.
Cuz there's no draws.
And a club game on the river, making up the flush.
Yeah, he doesn't need to come over the top if he has over pair on this board because it's either you got a set or he's got you dead. You know, to write for, for the most part, so I don't think, I would just be calling here in this spot with aces, kings, queens. Things like that, that you keep bluffing, um, cuz you're probably not just gonna go broke with the ten, you know, so. Yeah, like it.
Cause these players are seeing turn and won't be calling, yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's why we said we would be aggressive. And that's why we said we would bet river, like, I think betting river, I'm amazed at the river.
Yeah, me too.
I feel like we have no showdown value.
Yeah, he just gave up on a spot where he checked, called, flop. When he, he, he acknowledged that people see that too much is one of the reasons he called. So he's just hoping to beat king, jack, king, queen. And then think about the rest of the range other than that, just had you beaten, and there's a lot of weak ace high hands and under pairs that you can just make fold, so that's the way I would.
Jack ten, queen ten, king ten, ace ten, never checking the turn. Set of ten, set of five, set of two, set of nines, never checking the turn.
Yeah, there's just so many strong hands that would never check the turn, and there's a lot of ace highs and king highs and under pairs that would.
Jack, queens, kings, eights, never checking the turn.
But you're checking all your ten X, for the most part, you're not gonna lead into this, you know, the, uh, C better, the, the aggressor in that spot.
Yeah, I have all the tens in my ring.
Yeah, I mean, you have a lot of suited tens calling in this spot, so I don't know, I, I gotta disagree with this one, um, but it's okay. I don't like saying it out loud, I, it's, and we've done ass- assassinato quizzes where it's just completely off the wall, but it's different merit here. I just would have played the shit completely different, there's nothing wrong with that.
I can see the call versus three bet pre-flop, I can see that, and that's why it was a seven and a ten, totally makes sense to me. Um, the flop float versus three bet, uh, I can see that too, I think. That was a seven or a ten also, so like, I can totally get with that, this river check, I a hundred percent disagree.
Oh, yeah, me too, yeah, same here. Alright, cool, going to the next one.
What you wanna do now?
Alright, let me look at the quiz, excuse me. Um, WSOP main event from John, Jonathan Little six oh seven, that looks interesting, or, you know, that same tournament. If we really wanna.
Go deeper than that?
Yeah, cuz he, well, he has another hand, I think I seen it at four. From that twenty-six fifty, we did, was it four seventy-nine?
I see five eleven.
There's four seventy-nine, and let me see if there's something at five eleven. Oh, I'm going the wrong way?
I'm down to stick with the milli, you wanna stick with the milli?
Yeah, eight sixteen, twenty-five big blinds in the high jack, already looks kind of weird, but, uh, yeah, let's do it.
Uh, cool, so you're gonna do four seventy-nine?
Oh, or, or, oh, you, okay, yeah, let's do four seventy-nine, I was looking at five eleven, but.
Why don't we do four seven nine, then four ninety-six, and we'll, let's go down the milli path today.
Let's do it.
There's a tournament that we've, uh, you and I have both played multiple times.
Yes, yeah, I play this all the time. Every time we can, I try to play this if it's, if it's going, of course.
And it's even eight two offsuit, so this is right in your wheelhouse, buddy.
Oh, wait a minute, what, hey, oh, which, which one did you go to?
Forty-five?
Oh shit, I went to the wrong one, I went to, okay, I'll go to forty-eight-five, that's cool, I went to four seventy-nine.
Oh, no, no, my bad, I'll go to you, stay where you are.
No.
Four seven nine, there's too many of them.
Yeah, there's so many options.
Maybe it's best to just sort it by Matt Affleck. Four seventy-nine. Gotcha.
What's up, guys? What's up, Jean Paul?
Jack ten suited.
Jack ten suited and, uh, yeah, let's.
J G Cyrus, what's up, guys in my chat, alright, play the video.
Playing it.
Alright, in this hand, we have jack ten of spades, it's gonna fold to the high jack, who's playing, um, eighteen big blinds? Yeah, about eighteen, min raise, and it folds to us in the small blind. Should we fold, call, raise to thirty-eight thousand, or raise all in?
What's up, newness man? How you doing, buddy, how you doing?
You there? No, he's, I'm waiting for tell. That's cool.
Interesting, Cyrus is calling, Matt's calling.
This is, uh, very interesting considering he's opening off eighteen bigs into a reshove stack. And the button who is over a hundred big blinds as well, he is in late position, um. Man, this is, uh.
This is a close one for me too. Calling and jamming, uh, I don't hate to jam, Hoka, uh, the one thing that worries me is what you said, is that he's opening into a twelve blind stack.
Well, he's gotta assume that this guy, I'm, he's gonna be shoving a lot, and he's opening to a button who's capable of calling in three betting and. Pressuring him a lot, if he thinks he's opening a light into this guy who might just be. Not shoving as much or something if he has a read on him, so I'm always trying to think of what the table dynamic would be. And how I proceed in these kind of close spots, but obviously, we don't have any information, so this is just a pure. You know, what do we think is best, um, in a vacuum?
Jamming is to isolate both of them calls, get expect value seventy-eight K, I, I can get behind a jam, I jammed this a lot, man.
I certainly can as well, uh. I kinda feel like he would maybe wanna jam sometimes, so this guy. Doesn't squeeze, he has a pretty nice squeeze behind, but at the same time, I'm feeling like. Almost calling from what Matt, the way Matt likes to play, it feels like, from what, I mean, I'm just trying to gauge how, what would Matt do in this spot, you know?
Funny cuz I was watching Matt in my chat and I got confused there for a second, cuz he was talking about calling and raising and wasn't sure, um, wrong, Matt. So, yeah, you bring up another interesting point, if we flat here, we do open up the way, open up the squeeze.
Well, if he does squeeze, we'll have to call.
Flat here, seventy-three K should be jamming even more.
Yeah, and then once he jams with the dead money and the pot, I think, I mean, it's almost, it feels very close to a call off.
That sucks. I'd rather jam and get the fold out, but he did.
Yeah, from that level, cuz, I mean, yeah, this guy does find a few more shoves, but he also finds some more calls, which is fine, um. Yikes, I don't know.
In my chat, I have one, two, three calls. One, two, three calls, one, two, three all ins. And, uh, Matt, that went both ways and said, I don't know shit. Now we've gone four to three jam, five to three jam, uh. Kane, I don't have a password for anything, man, I don't have. Kane, I don't have a password for anything, man. I don't have a home game. I got nothing for you, homie. I don't even know who's Saturday.
Ah, shit. I don't know, uh.
So here's another question. For me, it's jam or fold?
Same here.
So I don't hate a fold either.
Oh, jam or folds? Oh, yeah, I'm jam, oh, you're never calling? Because of what I brought up before with this guy being able to squeeze and did put us in an awkward spot? What up, Hans? Slow roll. Yo, crazy sisters. Good morning. Just got here. Missed the whole hand so far. So. Yeah, this is just the hand. It's just starting. We got an eighteen big blind open from the high jack. Uh, cut off, folds, over a hundred big blind stack on the button. We're in the small blind with. Jack ten suited. And then we have a big blind here with like eleven, twelve bigs. Um, and here's your options. You would like to call, fold thirty eight or all in. What do you think, Holmes? I'm still waiting for this, waiting for it to delay to these guys. Cuz this is an interesting spot. I wonder how people approach it, you know? I'm, I, I mean, I'm a, I'm a fan of shoving, but, uh, when this guy opens off of sub twenty into this lineup, it makes me very. Um, suspicious, you know, I'm very suspicious of this open and it feels like it's stronger. More so than weaker if we have no information, which would lead me to call and. You know, go that route.
I think, um.
I mean, if we do get shot, if we do.
Um, I don't wanna set up squeeze. And we got ton of fold deck. What do you take it down now? I mean, that's basically what it is for me.
So you, you squeeze, I'm calling.
I don't even think we get called that much, Hoka. So that's, I mean, I agree, J ten suited is fine three ways for this many chips, but we got a lot of fold.
We have a lot of, I mean, but I, yeah, I, I, I just feel like he's, his range is gonna be a little bit more nutted. Into this lineup when there's a reshove stack and he's actually opening. It just shows. More relative strength in this guy on the button raising into him. So a raise is pricing the guy all in anyways. Yeah, we're not raising, Hans Slow Roll. This is our decision here has come down to raise all in. Call and fold, uh, thirty eight's almost a dummy. Question, it's like, when you, I don't know, forever making the thirty eight and folding. We're not making it thirty eight and inducing, so. It doesn't really accomplish much.
Uh, Martin's asking, if you flat here and the big blind shows, are you calling?
I probably have to.
I C Mizer spot. If you guys haven't been watching, um, I'm doing like a weekly thing of what would you do? Taking spots just like this and questions just like that and putting them out there for you guys to answer. So I think I just found my next, what would you do spot? So I'll run I C Mizer for that one.
I was about to pull it up and run it. Oh, I'm calling. Yeah, I mean, if I jam, i- i- if, i- if I call here and big blind jams and button folds, I'm calling. It's, yeah, I, I mean, at that pro, at that point, what's gonna be in there, twenty six? Twenty nine, it's gonna be, we're gonna, we're gonna be getting such a great price with a hand that plays relatively well versus his under pairs. His ace queens, um, we're just, it's just gonna play well enough versus his range, given the price that I think we'd be pricing the calling. That's gonna be my guess without. Running it in I C Mizer.
Interesting cuz I'm lean toward fold, but I'm really not sure. It's super close, I.
Alright, I'm going call. You shove, I call Hans Slow Roll says.
I'm jamming, you're calling. Is that fair?
Yep, that's it.
I think you won the last one too cuz I got fucked on the big bet on the river last one. I got a ten, seven, two, right? And you got a five, seven, something else.
Yeah, five, seven, five. I think that's even.
Nineteen and five, seven, five seventeen. I think I eat you.
Wait a minute. What did I get on that? Was it a five? I don't know, probably a five. We can look back, but yeah, that's fine.
No worries. Alright, we're gonna find out here too. Let's find out.
Let's do it.
This is a spot that I think seems really simple for a lot of people, but I think it's the wrong decision. I think the, the majority of population is just gonna flat call here in the small blind and I think that's a mistake. Not that you're, you're making chips flat calling for sure, but it's not the best decision. I think moving all in here for score of ten is definitely the best decision. Calling a score of four, thirty eight thousand, a score of three and folding a score of zero. This big blind here has about thirteen big blinds. So we're effectively playing about eighteen big blinds. Yes, ten Jack suited is strong enough to call, but let's think about if we shove, we can get hands like King Jack offsuit to fold. Ace ten offsuit possibly folds, um, Queen Jack folds, Queen ten folds, um. King Queen off might fold. So we get a lot of hands, you know, maybe deuces, threes and fours fold possibly. So we get a lot of hands that fold that we. Are either dominated by or are fifty fifty against. And when we get called, we have great equity as well. And we just pick up the thirty thousand chips in this pot a large portion of the time. So I think shoving is by far the superior play. We do shove villain calls. He has King Queen off. We hit the ten. Like I said, when we get called, we still have great equity with our hand. And we win a pop. Awesome. Very awesome. I wonder if King Queen's an actual call. This is a really good I C M Zer spot. I'm really glad we found this one.
Well done.
Yeah, yeah. And you know what I was saying is I'm not sure if that King Queen is a call or not. Um, I can't wait to run this in I C Mizer and find out.
Yeah, yeah. You got this one, Mark. This should be good because, yeah, uh, I don't know if this King Queen's a call per.
I'm not sure either. I'm really not sure.
Uh, you know, I think our King Queen suited, it's, it's all still so tough. I, I would love to, I can't wait for you to run this hand because, um. Yeah, I just think our, his shove here, how's King Queen suited doing here, you know? I, I would, I would assume we're definitely not folding like Ace Jack suited. Maybe not Ace ten suited, probably obviously eights plus, sevens plus. So King Queen off is very, probably marginal if I have to say.
Really close. And you know what? But like you and I always fuck up King Queen, right? Like.
Oh, man, we've been stuck. How, how many times have we re- reviewed King Queen in the past year? Hundreds of times we put it in I C Mizer. We're always scratching our head like, I guess this time we're doing it with this, with this stack. It's so funny, man.
From what I remember correctly, I think we call up, up to ten or eleven bigs and I want you to have to get.
Yes. Yeah, we looked at that a lot earlier, uh, last week. Yeah, that was good. Alright, cool. You win. That was one part. Fun times.
It's like ripping off the Band-Aid. Uh, for those of you guys, uh, just tuning in too, we are doing these pokercoaching.com quizzes. X point PC in my chat, exclamation point PC in Six's chat, um, for a link so that you can join up. There is a free option. Sign up for free. Get a free twenty quizzes, get some homeworks, get some other stuff. There's a bunch of free options for you. Um, so make sure you're doing that. You've got coaches here from Assassin Auto, Jonathan Little, Matt Affleck, uh, Evan Jarvis. There's these two handsome folks right here, myself. And Page Six is also has quizzes on this. So get in here, check it out. Um, take these quizzes. It's a good time. It's a great way to learn. It's interactive. It's fun. It's fantastic. Six, have you got anything else to add? Did I just? Cover it up?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you crushed it. Yeah, I mean, I think one other thing I, I've, that I've been looking at a lot is cuz I've been getting into cash. They have. The charts are amazing. Their GTO opening charts. Obviously, you know, you can deviate, depend, but i- if, if you're always. If you're, if you find yourself lost pre-flop, or you don't know how to really, you know, construct your own ranges, if, if you haven't built really a range. Um, they got the GTO ones here on the chart, uh, on the site and I think those are fantastic as a good starting play, point. And they're free. So, you know, certainly we're checking out. Then maybe I'll go to exactly where those are. At the end of the, uh, study session here and show you guys.
I'm fluid, I'm fluid. Alright, so next quiz is forty five.
Uh, four forty five?
Four eighty five.
Four eighty five.
Kept asking for a cash game quiz. Um, you know what? Uh, I'm gonna write that down. We'll do that one at the very end. Cuz we're kinda going down this milli path though. Um, and I suck at cash game. Um, I actually just started dabbling in cash games myself this week. I've never played them. I'm just, don't specialize in them. I'm a tournament specialist by far. Um, Six is more well-rounded when it comes to that stuff. He plays a lot of both. Um, so yeah, that'll be forward. Uh, that one is four fifty four. We'll get to that one before the end of the stream.
Cool. Yeah, we'll look at, uh, yeah, we'll look at some cash. I mean, yeah, we were talking about some cash games yesterday. Where, you know, we were, we're talking about cash yesterday and. I kinda, I, I try to play a little bit every week now. Been playing cash for a while. I'm. By far no specialist or very good at it, but I'm very comfortable with it.
Hey, that reminds me, are you still commenting for?
Poker on air? Um, well, the producer of that show, I believe, had some medical. I haven't done it in a while. But whenever they come back, you know, I have done, I do some commentating for a cash game. Uh, here locally where they play up to two five, some five ten is, as well every once in a while. And I've done about twenty hours of commentating and hanging around cash game streams. So that helped a lot as well.
Yeah, I was just trying to help you, help you promote that. That was still a thing.
Yeah.
Cool.
Alright.
Alright, so.
Eight deuce, oh.
There we go. This is the one I was talking about before, right? This is gonna be funny. I, I, I'm curious to see how this goes. Uh, let's play and find out.
Let's do it. Alright, let's see.
Alright, in this hand, we have eight deuce off in the big blind. It's gonna fold to the small blind. Who limps? Should we check? Raise to sixteen point two, raise to twenty one point four, or raise to twenty six thousand five hundred?
Alright, eight deuce off.
Homeboy Limps, uh, I knew this was gonna happen. And I knew this was gonna put me in a spot. So. I, I was half listening cuz I was answering some questions to the chat. Did he describe this player at all?
Zero. No, you know how Matt does. He's straight to the point. He's playing the hand right now. He's just playing it straight up, you know, best fundamentally sound strategic good poker that he can. And he does, I mean, he, in all of these videos that we've done of Matt, he's very southerly touched on. The type of player, you know, is behind, whereas if it's Assassin Auto video, he's all into, like, he's like, this guy is a tight.
The moon is in Saturn and.
Yeah, he's breathing hard, like.
Uh, yeah, I agree. And I actually think, funny you say that, cuz I think we saw that with the friggin' Ace Queen hand that he lost to. He didn't take the exploit.
Yeah, whereas, you know, I think people are gonna be over folding that spot, but he's just playing more fundamentally. It's like, I have showdown value here, so I don't need to turn my hand into a bluff. Um, is what he's thinking. But I'm always turning my hand into, well, not always, but a lot of time turning my hand into a bluff in that spot, but. I just think, I, I've been trying to get in ahead of Matt and I've been wrong a hundred percent of the time today. I wanna just check cuz I think that's what he's gonna do, like. I think he should, a min raise at most.
So for me, I would be raising this sometimes and just checking sometimes. If I don't know anything about you. Depends on a frisk game in the moment. Sometimes I'm gonna check, sometimes I'm gonna bet. If I see that you are limpy or nitty, I'm raising this for sure. Um, and if I see that you're aggressive, I'm gonna check as well. Cuz I don't want you to limp three bet me. I think that's gonna happen a lot against an aggressive player. But if you're nitty and or you're tight, this hand has no showdown value. It's not gonna flop pretty well. We take it down here a lot. Against limpy players, they're gonna call this and then check fold every time they miss. And flat you every time they have a piece and we just give up. We take it down there a lot too. Um, so in a vacuum, I'm really stuck because I legit fifty fifty this.
Yeah, what I'm doing, uh, for my coaching and the way I would play here, most times in this spot, I think in general. This is a weak, weak capped range from the small blind for the most part. Uh, most players are just gonna raise strong linear and complete everything else. Um. Now, he didn't say if this guy was a good capable player or not, so we just have to assume he's some middle of the road or just some standard player or whatever. Um, so that's gonna lead me to go with twenty six five and then betting small with, on a very, on a lot of textures. And then just probably giving up after that. Depending on the runouts. So I'm just more prone to making it bigger. We are about a hundred big blinds deep. So I don't really like a small raise. It accomplishes nothing but him continuing with his entire range. Um, so yeah, I think I really like twenty six if I am gonna raise. And then, you know, firing on a lot of boards that are gonna be good for my range.
Yeah, uh, Hoka's saying both hundred deep, three betting is not gonna take it down. Uh, we're not betting for value. We're putting value on it by risk, by three betting. Not really three betting either, right? We're just raising a.
We're just raising.
We're raising a limp. Um, with position. I mean, yeah. So it's about getting fold equity and attacking weakness. Just like that Ace Queen, it's just about attacking weakness.
Well, we could have a very strong hand. We could have a very, our, our, our cards don't matter right now, right? We have eight two, but. We just think about ranges. Most times in a small blind, he's just gonna be weak and capped in this spot. When we do get both flop in position, we're never gonna really flop equity or playability type hands with eights, do, eight deuce where we're comfortable. Um, so we just therefore make our range look strong and keep his range weak and capped and try to attack that.
We also prevent the limp league, which is an easy way for him to just. Flat here, literally bet any flop and we're never gonna hit. When we check back, so often we just check fold. Here, we take that the other day by just betting now and taking it down or betting now and see betting.
Yeah, cuz when he leaves.
We don't really care about losing five bigs here, six bigs here by popping it up. And, uh, see bet, seven.
Uh, I'm going with twenty six five.
I'm just saying, everyone in my chat, well, not everyone, the majority, majority of my chats is twenty six.
What do you guys? Hans Slow Roll says snap fold, min raise at most. I feel like checking. He sees Ace Deuce and he's just shook, but he says we're folding.
You can't snap fold. You're in the big blind.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, he had to, I let him know. I think he's aware. Why is?
And min raise accomplishes.
Well, I would go twenty six.
I think checking is cool. Um, like, checking is, is fine. Like, that's gonna be not. It's not like checking is gonna be a four and betting is gonna be a ten or vice versa, I would say.
Well, yeah, somebody makes a good point in my chat, like, why go twenty six, five instead of twenty one? When we do utilize practically the same amount of fold equity and, um. We would ness, I mean, we would just be folding out all his shit to just fold. And we're gonna get all the same responses. For a little bit less and it's gonna allow us to raise that size with our value hands. I think that's really good.
Actually, I don't disagree with that at all. He's the weirdo in this chat. Okay, like, that's the whole reason why we do this and the whole reason why we're here, man. Uh, one, there's a bunch of different ways to play these hands and a bunch of different thought processes. It's all about getting better and having fun. No judgment. And.
No, no judgment, guys, yeah. I think he swayed me to just going twenty one because, I mean, at the same, we're, we're literally accomplishing the exact same thing. And we're just risking slightly less to do so.
Yeah, you got me, you got me, you got me half sway. You do have me.
Like twenty six, yeah, I, I think sixteen's way too small. Twenty six, it's fine. Uh, I don't think he folds anymore. To that than he does twenty one, though.
I think that's fair. Um, I'm just used to popping it a little bit more.
Same here.
But, uh, Holden says the great thing about playing eight two off is that you can always just claim misclick no matter what happens.
Alright, uh, so, yeah, what do you, alright, yeah, I think I'm just gonna go twenty one. I'm gonna go with my chat. My dude came out of left field with the good response and I'm rolling with it.
That's interesting, um. My whole chat said twenty six.
You gotta go with the chat.
And we all forget co-equity. We're gonna win this hand a hundred percent. This is all in, um. I don't know how to click. I mean, I'm already up two quizzes. I guess I can just click twenty six and.
I'm already in my. Man, this guy, we gotta do six quizzes today. No, I'm kidding. It's five o'clock. We're still doing these.
Uh, alright, so I guess I'm gonna go twenty six cuz everyone went twenty six. Except Marlin and, and Hoka.
Alright, Russ, be doing this. Alright.
In this spot, uh, the correct play actually probably seems counterintuitive. I think the correct play here is to raise to twenty six thousand five hundred. I think checking's the score of eight, sixteen point two, score of one, and twenty one point four, score of five. And, um, here's why. Um, villain three I knew was a very, very good regular. And if you look at theory and what a lot of the solvers kinda say nowadays. And I agree with this. In the small blind at a hundred big blinds deep with a, an ante in the pot, you wanna be limping. Almost, pretty much a hundred percent of your hands. You're gonna fold out some of the junkier hands at the, the pre-flop. But you don't, don't really wanna have a raising range. And the reason is, is you wanna be able to limp in with hands like. Eight, four offsuit because you're getting such a great price. You're getting four to one on your money. And so therefore you start limping your big hands and you develop a big linear limp raising strategy. And now. Now, with that, we can kinda develop a polar raising range out of the big blind. We're gonna be raising, wanting to raise about forty percent of our hands. Um, and so we're gonna raise all our, obviously.
Um, and so we're gonna raise all our obviously good, you know, sexy hands suited Broadway suited connectors, all our pairs, all our big card hands. And then we're gonna mix in, you know, a lot of these junkier offsuit combos that just have no value. Because villain is limping a hundred percent of hands and he's just gonna have to fold a lot and we instantly turn this into a profitable hand by raising. So I like raising to twenty six point five. We don't have to do this every time. It's probably about a fifty percent play. Checking and raising both have about similar equity, similar EV. Um, and villain calls. Flop comes queen, ten, five rainbow. Check. Should we, uh, check? Bet fifteen point four. Bet twenty thousand nine hundred, bet twenty six thousand, or bet forty two thousand one.
I find it interesting, these are earlier quizzes by Matt Affleck, and he's got all these crazy options that are like, not that far from each other. There's a big difference between twenty and forty or twenty six and forty, but there's not a huge difference between fifteen and twenty and twenty and twenty six.
Alright, whenever you're ready, buddy.
That's interesting. That actually makes me think.
Just seems like we're bloating the pot with garbage. I guess the bigger, yeah, I mean, and if you look at theoretical in this spot. Three point two. To, you know, we're going to three to three point five. But at this stack depth, I think we wanna be three two to three five. Tell you got me muted if you, uh, if you can't hear me. I mean, if you can't hear me, I can't hear you. Hold on, guys. Waiting for the toe. Whoops.
Are you there?
Yeah, you had me muted.
I thought I was muted. I didn't have you muted.
Oh, I, I mean, we were talking. I was sitting here talking, uh, I muted you, but it's all good. Yeah, I can hear you now.
My bad. That was weird. Said you guys are stepping all over each other. I was like, whoops, sorry.
So, yeah, I mean. Excuse me?
You go first.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what everyone's doing here. Like, I, I agree initially, like, in game I'm always gonna use. Cause the, I know the way we study here, we're always gonna be using over three X. For me, it's three point two to three point five. Maybe even three point seven five, depending on opponents and maybe if we're splitting our range in this spot. Um, which is really hard to do, uh, unless we know our opponent's gonna be limp calling very wide, like on battle line to some of those guys. You can just go bigger because they're never folding. Um, but yeah, I like the size pre-flop and here we just have absolute shit. But I still think we have a range advantage where I would just wanna bet small ones. Try to fold out all the random shit that might, the set, you know, the seven six suited and hands like that. Um, so I think we should be going small here.
Come talking about eight two doesn't hit well, another side bigs in this thing, and so I think we're gonna end up losing this pot. However, uh, or Hoka rather. Uh, however, Hoka, we're gonna win this pot a lot more often when we raise it and just take it a hundred percent. And like, you can't be afraid of, of giving up some chips like that ace queen hand. Um, you were worried about being in there marginal, we would have won like a twenty blind pot there, right? Um, so win twenty there, lose nine here, up ten blinds is good. Um, Holden said we're both megalomaniacs. That's why we were talking over each other like they're all voices. What do you call that? Folds a C bet, gotta give up this cap. Uh, I am checking a hundred percent.
But because it's two cards over a nine as well and you think. He's just gonna have a range that always continue. So question being, if you're checking, are you just gonna find up a little AC bet when he does check twice? Cause that same range that isn't going to continue is just going to check back the turn.
So I am going to bet cards under a nine. Uh, I would probably, probably wouldn't bet an eight. So let's say a nine, I'm gonna say cards under a seven, I'm gonna bet if he checks twice. Cause now I think he doesn't have any queens for sure and he shouldn't have too many ten X at that point. I'm gonna go bet bet. Um, but if it's any card over that, he's got all the two pairs on the street.
Yeah, no, when we bet here, we just have nothing cooking for future streets, right? Like, what are we gonna do? Like, we, our plan would literally be to bet here, make him fold and give up. Whereas if he checks back turn, I might feel a little bit more comfortable turning my hand into a bluff. And if we make a pair with showdown value, we just take it. So, I mean, God, I think we should be probably just checking. What do you guys think?
Don't go to war with trash cans. No, no, no. Can't play your cards for face value. You gotta take spots. We gotta exploit sometimes. Detail is good. Sometimes you gotta, you gotta venture off.
Uh, what up TG's PLO? He says, good luck in the.
I am so much.
What do you guys, so you guys checking in my chat? Hollins, what are you doing here? What are you doing here? T, this is at my hand. This is actually a coach Matt Affleck on pokercoaching.com. Uh, we're reviewing one of his spots. This is at my eight two and I does, I do hope it works out for him.
Cyrus says open fold. That's cool.
Russ says check. I am, I mean, I feel like I wanna bet small one to make a bunch of his shit fold that has equity, but I don't know. Uh, we got two checks in my chat, so, yeah, I feel like we're gonna just check here and then delay C bet for some reason.
I mean, I'm saying, what does a limp calling range look like? It's a ton of pain, a ton of weak ace and then a ton of medium small bet.
But if you think, yeah, somebody made a good point, like, think about how many hands are continuing. Um, jack eight, jack nine, king, jack, every single queen X that suited, ten X that suited offsuit. Um, there's just a massive amount of hands to do, continue to our C bet, and we don't have any double barrels. All the cards are weird and bad. I think, yeah, a five, eh, like, seven, five, uh, spades is never folding to a small bet either. Um.
Yeah, even like any backdoor, any pair with.
Any backdoor.
Any draw with a backdoor, backdoor flush draw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Small bet does nothing, although like his range is still super wide. Think maybe a weird, like, if he checks twice, then just making a big stab on the turn or something. But yeah, I think checking is just gonna be best. Reasonable word to give up, in my opinion. Fair enough, but every board's gonna look like that when you have eight deuce damn near.
Eight five four or queen five four.
Yeah.
King three two, we can see that. Ace blank blank, we can see that.
Kinda reminds me of when we were looking at our charts, where we were looking at. Range advantage and, you know, which part of our range should we be betting? This board here, um. Probably would fall into that category, but we just have so low equity. We wanna check, so, alright, we're checking. Let's do it.
Alright, after opponent called our four X ISO, I think we wanna slow down a little bit. We've definitely tightened up his range to probably about thirty percent of hands. Maybe forty percent. We have forty percent of hands and this hand obviously just has maybe ten percent equity. Fifteen percent, just really, really poor equity range versus range. So checking is scored ten, fifteen point four score of seven. Twenty thousand nine hundred score of five, twenty six thousand score of three, forty two thousand score of one. You know, these two Broadway boards, it's gonna be a pretty good board for us, but our opponent, we've tightened up his range a decent amount too, so he's gonna allow, have a lot of queen and ten X. He's still gonna float with some ace highs, so I think we can check back, maybe get a delay C bet in there at some point. Turns a four of diamonds. Villain checks, should we check? Bet fifteen point four, bet twenty thousand nine hundred, bet twenty six thousand, or bet forty two thousand one fifty.
Yo.
Yo, well, I mean, here we are with one of those cards.
It happened, yeah. Um, a lot of, if we did condense his range, this card probably helps him less. Um. Shit, man, I think we have to blow. It's just a question of sizing. I wonder if Matt's gonna like us just using relatively small sizing. I would personally probably go forty two for once and then be done with it. Uh, giving him less opportunities to float, but do we need to risk that to get him to fold the range of hands to just? Give up and have very little equity.
Yeah, we got.
Cause he's gonna call with little, so I either like twenty six or forty two. What are you guys thinking here?
I got a couple of twenty nines, I got a couple of forty twos, I got a twenty six. We all even this is a bluff, question mark. Um, yes, to represent twenty six, twenty six. I don't think we need to go forty two. Um, I don't think when we check back. Um, we ever have queens either, for the most part.
Right.
And so I don't think we need to go forty two. Um, so for me, it's gonna be, well, forty percent is twenty four four, so in game, that's what I would do. Twenty six is the closest to that. That's where I would go.
That's kinda what I'm feeling as well. I'm, I'm very torn between twenty six and forty two. Rust says twenty six as well in my chat. Yeah, man, I mean, shit.
And I'm legit bombing a lot of rivers. Almost every river. I, I'm trying to think of a river I'm not bombing. I don't have very many.
We gotta figure out what his continuing range is gonna be here. What do we think that's gonna look like, you know?
That's small, he's got all the paint draws, but he's also gonna have all the single paint, like gutter ball stuff that's gonna get one pair, even if a paint card comes on the river.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm torn between these two bets. Twenty six, I'm, I'm leaning towards that as well. Forty two was my instinctually to just to go forty two. Condense that range to needing like near the top of his check back range on the turn. And then probably giving up on some rivers. But I, you know, I, I'm very, I'm very torn. Twenty six, I think forty two looks like we're trying to push him off of it. Yeah, I mean, cause what part of our range would we really check back in position? Twenty six can look like we are now betting a ten, some other pair. Where will you be betting ba, we'd be betting our queen X on this board maybe, so.
The problem is, is, uh, he is calling all his ten X two, uh, huh, but he's not calling a bet and another bet with a lot of his ten X. I'm gonna get ten X hold. Uh, Kep says, do we bet the backdoor flush drop? It comes in on the river, so assuming we had eight two of diamonds. And we would bet this turn and then will we bet river? Yes.
Yes.
We get called, we should overbet river. Yes, 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 yes. Um, Hoka says represent the flush straights, check five, queens, ten, cause we raised pre-check pot. And forty two display, no, that means, yeah, but I think that a lot of his range still comes along here. A lot of the paint and gutters and stuff and all that stuff. And they're gonna come along for no, any price, but they're not gonna come along for double bear. So the problem, here's the controversy. We bet forty two here, we have to be done on the river. Right? I mean, we're putting a lot of chips in the pot at that point. Whereas if I go twenty or twenty six, I can go back here and then bet river. I think those are the two options for me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards, uh, just getting a good price on our bluff. Really targeting and making him fold out all of his no equity hands here and then reevaluating, seeing if we can bluff. Again, on the river, which we're probably gonna have to go back turn back river with eight high. Um, and at that point, we wanna use our small bet now and then a big bet on the river as opposed to using one big bet. So, yeah, I kinda like it and I've talked myself into twenty six. I was leaning very hard towards forty two, but I like twenty six more than I think about it.
Martin says, doesn't the fifteen four enough to get the job done here when he does call the bottom river? It's a card, fifteen is just too small, man. That's like. Was that quarter pot?
Yep.
And that's, I think that's, I think quarter pot's too small.
Yeah, third pot doesn't really, I think, yeah, I think twenty six going to like forty-ish percent pot is good as well. Um, Russ Doughnut says, if he's a good player, he notices you rep super thin if you go forty two, but versus a bad player, forty two makes more sense. Kind of agree. Alright, ready to move on? Let's do it, baby.
Here again, once we check back, if we're gonna be betting here, I think we need to be betting large. Um. We have some two pairs that we turn with like some ten four suited, queen fours suited, maybe that we check back, five fours. Um, we still don't have much equity. We have the deuce of diamonds, which helps a tiny bit. We block hands like king deuce of diamonds, jack deuce of diamonds. Um, that would wanna continue. But again, I think I might just wanna check again and try to probe the river maybe. Um, I give checking a score of ten. Fifteen point four three, twenty thousand nine hundred five, twenty six thousand seven, and forty two thousand one fifty score of one. I did fire, I for, fired twenty six thousand. You know, I think it's perfectly fine here. It's forty percent pot. Um, definitely want some hands to be doing that with. Um, I assume now I'm gonna block, bluff any six, seven or diamond. On the river, which is a decent strategy here. Um, villain does call. The river's the ten of hearts. Should we check? Bet thirty one thousand, bet forty five thousand two hundred, bet sixty eight thousand two hundred, or bet eighty seven thousand two hundred.
What up?
Alright.
So seven, seven's not bad. Um, I think he said betting the forty two was like a one point, right?
No, he said fifteen was one point. He said if he did wanna. Bet turn, he would prefer the bigger size, so I'm assuming our size was the best, big size, second best was the forty two. I don't know if that was an eight or whatever, uh, but yeah, I, I think he said he wanted to use a big size on the turn. And he, he gave the fifteen thousand a one point.
This is, this controversy in my, in my chat, and I, I, I disagree with them here. Um, so my chat's going crazy, says worst river ever, just giving up. Folds because it looks super tricky, uh, bombing this river, I guess. Terrible river, brutal card. Never fold now, check give up. We can't rep anything, check, except for ten X.
Holy shit.
I mean, we have all the ten X.
Yeah, we would check back at ten X, uh, very believably on the flop. Cause we don't, at that point, we wouldn't have a three street hand. We'd be checking back a lot of our ten X. I think villain would be leading a lot of his ten X on the turn to, for value, um, and to deny equity. You know, uh, from some of our range, if he had a ten X on the turn, um. And then when he does call, some of the backdoor diamonds jaws miss, some of the straight jaws miss, we could put a lot of pressure on a four or a five. Um, you know, that might have checked twice, all the, you know, king and ace highs are folding. I, I think we had a bluff.
We have to, we're at high, there's nowhere to win. There's no question.
Yeah, we're at the bottom of our range. When, when we're at the bottom of our range in these kinda spots, uh, uh, I'm not gonna say always if we, if we. Think there's a very high likelihood of us getting called. I don't think there's a super high likelihood of us getting called in this spot, so. I certainly went a bad here. Let's see what my chat, uh.
I got two sixty eights, two eighty, three eighty sevens.
It's so hard to play Matt, man. I thought I would be better at Matt quizzes than I am the pits at his quizzes.
Uh, I would be betting ace.
Yeah, I would be going big as hell. But I mean, I'm try, I always try to put myself in ahead of Matt, like, does he think in this spot? That. All his showdown value hands are gonna call no matter what and we're still just targeting the hands that have missed. Or the weak equity hands, so we should go just forty five? But it doesn't seem like he likes small bets for blocks.
Sixty two is sixty percent dead even.
This hand is just absurd.
Eighty seven, two hundred.
No, this hand isn't absurd at all. You've seen my stream.
Yeah, it's like two thirds pot or sixty percent. I would be going.
Who wanted these two?
I can see the argument for sixty percent, for sure. Um, someone's saying his hand is, is, is out in left field. The difference is that like, we're not playing our cards with eight two. It's not about.
It's not about with our actual hand. People are like, oh, this hand is just absurd. Well, eh, eh, this is, these, we're just playing. This is a range game at this point, you know? He's aware that he's limping a hundred percent of his range. We should be combating that and not letting him limp a hundred percent. And attacking the fact that he's playing so many hands with raising super wide, you know? And we should take hands like this for balance, you know, so.
Yeah, and again, it's not about eight two. It's about the fact that he is checking, limping, calling and checking, and that's weak and we can attack that.
Yeah, just pass him one.
I, my cards don't matter. I could have two napkins. You know, it's not about the cards at all. Um, it's like this happen all the time though. They do if you play eight two. Check let it go. Don't go to war with trash cans. No, 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 we have to bet. Hundred percent.
Yeah, I got a couple sixty eights and now somebody says, I wish there was an overbet. What up, at rock? He says, I wish there was an overbet. I know, I kinda, I watch that Jonathan, uh, Jaffe's stuff as well. Yeah, that Jada, yeah, that, yeah. I just wonder if we block enough, but at this, at the same time.
Call my, call my one thirty bet. Call it.
Yeah.
There's no calling my one thirty bet here. No.
Especially, I tell you, I think he bets a ten on the turn, um, at some frequency as well. Especially, I tell you, I think he bets a ten on the turn, um, at some frequency as well into us.
Four, value. Sixty eight, eighty seven.
Yeah, I'm going eighty seven.
I'd be going eighty seven.
Yeah. What do you guys? So we got a couple sixty eight, eighty seven is the only way we rep a ten. Hans Laro says. Yeah, I mean, we would go big as hell. We had a ten.
Three, three eighty sevens, one. Two, three, four. I'm four on four in my chat.
He rode too often with sixty eight. I like, yeah, I think we're gonna go, I I I'm going to eighty seven.
We're tied, so I'll be tied right.
All right, cool. Let's do it.
Interesting spot here on the river with the ten pairs. Um, a ten is really kind of following the story that we told. We checked back the flop. You know, we fought metal pair, don't wanna put a lot of money in the pot. He checked again on the turn. Now we start betting for value. Now the river's a ten, you know, I think it's very reasonable. We could go for a very large bet here. Um, I think checking and betting eighty seven thousand two hundred are both fine options. I give them both a score of ten. Sixty eight thousand two hundred, I gave a score of seven. Forty five, two hundred and five, and thirty one thousand a score two. If we're gonna bet, we need to be betting large because. Um, we're repping a ten if we bet here. Um, our blockers, they're not the best. We blocked ten eight. Um, I wish we had another middling card like eight, seven. I think I would definitely go for it, so. I can get behind checking, I can get behind betting big. I'd probably. I don't know, it's close. Villain shows ace, eight of diamonds. Definitely a hand we would have gotten to fold probably for the eighty seven two. I mean, I kinda regret not pulling the trigger. I remember this hand, but, um. You know, a ten definitely follows the, the story we were trying to tell.
All right, boys. Good job, baby.
Yeah, I mean, we had it hot.
We did it, baby.
Um, but it's funny cuz, uh, this time he liked the exploit, but he didn't do it in game, which I find.
Yeah, yeah, that's two times he didn't, he didn't bet the river in spots that we, I mean, I'm. Very, very, very high frequency betting the ace three hand and this one.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent betting.
I I I don't, I can't see myself checking, checking. I am never checking.
We have eight high, we have to bet a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And he said that too. Yeah, it was a good one, man.
Yeah, he, he knows. I mean, we all make these mistakes. I mean, he's not immune to them either. That's what's interesting, you know? Nobody is.
No, everyone makes mistakes.
Yep. So that was good.
I mean, you've made quizzes, right? You've made quizzes and about hands where you made mistakes, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, my quiz, my quizzes are just be like, ah, I think this is the better option than what I actually did in game cuz that, that's a good point to, when you're studying. You know, going back and being like, damn, I could have did this better. This is the best line. Um, but the hand could still be very interesting, but I I don't mind the way he he got here. I know a lot of people are torching him because I would ra- probably raise this as well, um, at some frequency, not a hundred percent.
I love that he said fifty fifty because when we were talking, I said, I'm exactly fifty fifty here. You know, cuz like it's the same, right? I think you're about the same.
Yeah, yep. Cool, another one.
Um, so you usually have to go pretty much in a half hour, right?
Um, we can do, oh, so you're trying to say, should we get in the cash game one right now?
Yeah.
You guys wanna do a cash game one? We'll see how much time we have. I might have to run upstairs and check on my kids. It's a. Let me run upstairs real quick and make sure they're not getting anything in there. Like literally two seconds.
That was a fun handicap. No, it was definitely a fun catch. Um, you know, one thing I'm taking off from this is, what's that? Ashley, come on, you're killing me, Ashley. I don't have the password. You can see I'm not hosting the home game. I responded you in the chat, told you have to ask the host. I'm not the guy. Hit him up on Twitter. Sorry. Um. What's one thing you take away from this? Hold nuts. But that's mostly sex actually on Go Play Results oriented by the way. Uh, like Ben McSaw checks, so it's more like, I like Ben Mc, oh, whatever.
All right, we're back. Yep, we're good. I got a little time. We got more time than I thought we we had, so I could do another quiz or two.
Cool. Thanks, uh, thanks for that news, by the way, in my chat. Um, so you wanna hit one more of these and then do the cash game one, or you wanna go over to cash game and do two cash games?
No, let's go, uh, let's go to another tournament we're right now.
Let me scroll down here and see where the hell we're at. The next one I see is four ninety one.
Four ninety one. Gosh, these, these mad Affleck's are mind blowing today. I kinda wanna, I mean, let, let's get a different flavor. Let's get it. I mean, no, no offense to Matt. I mean, these are very interesting. Good hands, but let's just show the differences in some of the coaches, the style, the stylistic differences, you know, between guys. Um, whoo. Have we done, have you done five fifty seven?
Oh, what about five eighty eight?
Five eighty eight. Who we got? We're, we'll get to those. How about next week? Let's, let's give, let's, let's for sure do our, um.
That's cool. I'll just send you up, homie.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we're gonna do a cash game after this, at rock. Um, I had moved past it when I was thinking it was an assassin auto one. Let's just find an assassin auto one. Um, I'm looking around. Two hundred BBs with nine, five suited. I like that kinda shit. Can look at some junk. Yeah, let's see, uh. Five thirty eight. I just see, I just see garbage hand and I wanna see.
You wanna go deep?
And it's in a big blind, yeah, cuz this.
I already took the five thirty eight.
Okay, let's do another.
But I bombed it. And don't remember it. So if you wanna take it again, I'm down.
But you already have your score and everything there.
My score is like a zero, a fourteen, an eight, and then I'm dead.
Damn. All right, let's do it. It's tough, yeah.
But we played everyone, I don't care.
Oh, hold on. Somebody's asking some, he says, so add rock, uh, pokercoaching.com, there is a premium membership, which I believe is forty dollars a month. But they have a lot of free content that you can check out. Uh, you can do twenty of these quizzes for free. Free charts, uh, opening charts, free homework assignments. It's actually fucking sick, man. I'm surprised. People don't just ta- I, I got free accounts on almost all these training sites, so this is definitely worth it, you know?
Yep, homeworks, quizzes, charts, uh, all of it will be for absolutely free. PC in my chat, PC in Six's chat, the links are already up there right now. I did it in both our chats.
Yeah, I mean.
And, uh, click them. Go check them out. It's free. You can't miss out on the free. You wanna sign up for the premium, you get over six hundred quizzes. Um, and a gajillion homeworks, there's free webinars, my quizzes on there, Six's quizzes on there, all these awesome coaches, Evan Darvis, John Little, Sassenato. And who else? Matt Affleck, um, so get out.
You know what else you guys can do, which is kinda cool, is. Download for free. Pull up these quizzes and then do them along with us, but just answer them the way you want to and score, see how you score versus us. So I would say. You know, download, sign up for free. Do these quizzes with us and then, you know, you can mark them, you can score them yourself and whatnot, and I think that'd be fun.
Absolutely.
So, yep. Um, all right, so this is obviously made it to heads up in this tournament, so. And he's a little bit of a chip deficit versus this guy, so, yep, let's do it.
Uh, which number? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no problem. It's five thirty six, eight hundred dollar tournament. Thought I said that.
Five thirty six.
Yep.
Why don't I have?
Here. Take, give Kim the half of this.
What?
Give Kim the half.
You know, it's funny, I don't have five thirty six.
Excuse me?
Does it have a lock next to it?
No, do you, are you filtered? Is that why? Are you still filtered?
Five thirty two, five thirty, I go five thirty two to five thirty eight in turn.
All right, that's so weird.
Thirty six up top. Hang on, hang on. I don't see five thirty six, Matt.
All right, that's cool. We can pick, pick one. You can pick one. That's kinda weird.
Let me see, score of five thirty six, let me see on here. I'm looking at history right now.
Um, boop, boop. Oh, there is.
Yeah, so I, it's a cash game one and I haven't unlocked it yet.
Oh, man, I had the wrong damn number cuz it was assassin auto. It was five thirty eight. I'm in Egypt. All right, five thirty eight.
Five thirty. I got that one. Cool, that's the one I bombed.
All right, cool. That's what I meant, yeah.
All right, uh, we're gonna turn this one way up, assassin auto, so.
Yeah, it's always super low, so I'm sorry if it's really low, guys. We, we got a jam bumped up, though.
All right, plan it now.
All right, guys, so we are heads up in a ten dollar MTT for all the marbles. Started with a few thousand people, now we're going for it on an international site. We have nine, five of clubs here in the big blind. Villain in a small blind is a solid reg, but he seems a little terrified. Uh. He's, it's one of those guys, he's not letting the moment come to him. He's not trying to create the moment. He's just kinda sitting there like a deer in the headlights so far. Uh, we have seven point eight mil at one hundred K, two hundred K with a twenty two point five K ante. And he goes ahead and raises on the button. Uh, we just three bet a couple times. And, uh, both of them worked for us. So here, do we wanna fold? Do we wanna call? Do we wanna raise to eight hundred K or do we wanna raise to one million?
All right.
So we got a lot of information this one cuz we knew it was a Sassenato, so.
Yeah, see how he says that kinda stuff compared to Matt. Matt just goes straight into the hand, etcetera. So we have eight deuce in the big blind, you know, what do we do here? And we're assessing, I was like, this guy's got deer in the headlights, you know, he's not really te- he's terrified. So it's a big change right there. I kinda like that kinda stuff.
Yeah, and so a lot of interesting information. This is a likely a poker star's final table, so there's a shitload of money on top. And cuz it's an international site, right? And this guy's a little scared.
Yeah, might be his biggest score ever or something like that. He's got a two to one here. He says he's three bet him a couple times. Um. This is interesting, like, I never know what kind of a line of Sassenato wants to take when he has a read that somebody's terrified heads up. He's already been kind of aggressive. Um, somebody says we're assassin auto, so we raise to three point five X kappa. Uh, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I probably just, it's heads up, so. We're not folding.
Yeah, I got a bunch of flats. I am on team flat as well. I would call as well.
Yeah, I mean. Part of me thinks assassin auto wants to raise to one million.
Me too.
But, um, personally, I would just take this as the flat.
Me too.
But I don't, I really think, uh, he wouldn't mind three betting him. Oh, I wanna go. What do you guys think Assassin Auto's gonna do here, guys? He's really hard to, uh, nail down in these spots. That's why I love these quizzes.
Everyone in my chat has called, I'm called too, so I think that's where we're gonna end up going, but yeah.
Russ's call, yeah. All right, so we got one call here. I'm leaning towards call as well. I mean, we'd have to have some kinda damn read that this guy's over folding. Or some other note that he's just very passive post flop or something, overfolds to see bets for me to wanna raise, um. Here. So, yeah, I think we just call.
Yeah, Hans says fold, we can never fold to a min raise with a suited hand.
I do too, Hans.
Um, seven two suited is a call here, it's a min raise. Uh, Matt said three bet gets a stack to pot close to getting all in by the river, so I don't know. Um, the question is, do we wanna get all in by the river with a five suited? There better be a lot of green clubs out there.
All right.
There's a flat? I think so.
I kinda think he goes to one million as well, but, uh. Cuz he brought up the fact that this guy's terrified. He's three bet him a couple times.
That's playing.
Probably what's his six. But I'm gonna go with call just because I think it's the most logical response with this hand in this situation.
I think we all agree.
Yep.
All right, let's play it.
Uh, let's do it.
All right, guys. So here, if you wanted to lay off the three bet, that's totally fine. I think three betting is okay as well if you just really think this guy can't play ball. Uh, just don't fold. So we go ahead and call here. And the board comes king, seven, three. Do we want to check? Bet two hundred and twenty two K, bet four hundred and twenty five K, or bet seven hundred and seventy seven K?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Hook says if he checks, we bet, um, we're out of position, so.
So he won't. So we have to act first here.
Yeah.
And he's questioning dunk leading this. Into the race on such a dry board where we're literally just repping a pair.
I don't think there's anything to talk about here. I think we just check. McClitt, awesome screen name. Thank you for the follow. Sedaco, thank you for the follow as well. I missed that one a while back. Um. Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's much to talk about. We're just checking to the aggressor all this, right?
That's my, I don't know if anybody.
Three, seven, nine, we lead out. Three, or three, seven, six, we lead out. Three, seven. Eight, we can lead out. Not this, not this.
Yeah, we have no pair, no draw. Sure, he's got a wide opening range and maybe. I'm trying to get in the head of Assassin Auto.
And why would he like a small bet? We would never lead out with the king.
Yeah, it it just would make no sense. He has backdoor draws heads up where he thinks this guy missed a lot. And he wants to set his own price to get to realize his draw and have fold equity. Like, I can see that maybe being a thing, but it's, it's no line that I've ever, I'm familiar with and it's certainly not. GTO, so.
Yeah, yeah, me either. And, uh, Matt's asking check call or check raise. I know what I would do, but I don't wanna answer that until we get to the turn or get to the action here cuz I don't wanna ruin the next answer.
Yeah. Um, honestly, I feel like heads up with what Assassin Auto said, he's gonna wanna bet two, two, two. That's how my gut feels. Um, so we can just double barrel a lot of this guy's weak range out if he does pick up equity as in a six. Uh, turn some straight draw card or a club or a pair, he probably bets twice. So, yeah. Personally, I think he's gonna wanna go this. But I, 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 you know, it, it's, it's certainly not, uh, something that I think is fundamental, so I don't know. What do you guys think? And everybody says, no, he has. A backdoor flush draw. He has no pair, no draw. We check. Um, backdoor, but I'm not betting that.
This is a c bet, mom. This is just, this is a donkey.
Yeah, this would be a donkey because he opened on the button. Ah, God.
Cyrus, the pot's eight forty five.
All right, uh, sounds like you're checking.
Yeah, everyone's checking in my chat. I, I don't think there's much to talk about here.
Yeah, nobody, nobody's doing anything different. I get, I mean, I don't need to go make a bad play just because I'm trying to. Trying to get in Alex's head and trying to emulate the goat, one of the goats.
My opinion for Alex is don't try and get in his head. Do your best and figure out what the hell that genius says.
Yeah, do your best and then learn from what he does. Yep. All right, let's do it. We're checked.
We're, uh, I'm gonna have to save explanations for the end of this hand, guys, so I'm just gonna say it's a check. And he goes ahead and fires. Now here, do we want to fold? Do we wanna call? Do we wanna raise to eight hundred and eighty eight thousand or do we wanna raise to one point one million?
So we got in that exact spot Matt was talking about, which I kinda knew was gonna happen. That's why I didn't answer.
In game, leading to two, two.
You're leading two, two, in game?
Oh, I said, I said, I said never in game. I'm never leading two, two, two in that spot. I'm always taking this line, you know, so that's fine. I just would thought he might have done something different because he's Alex, but. Now this is where it gets a little tricky, huh?
I mean, I know what I'm doing here, but I'll let the chat come and talk about what they're gonna do first.
Hmm, yeah, I'm getting lit in my chat ketchup. Uh, might steal it with the bet, but I don't know. Yeah, oh, you're talking about the initial bet? Nah.
Backdoor clubs, backdoor straight, same one more card, he's calling. Hook is folding next hand, please. Marlin's folding. Nudist is calling.
I'm check raising.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm check raising. Heads up, uh, because there's just gonna be enough cards on the turn. That we can continue bluffing practically a club if he does call, a four. Any card that gives us backdoor straight draw as well as the backdoor flush draw. So if it's a club and a low card, uh, that would be. Maybe a means just over bet. Um, but yeah, here, I, I, I think we just check raise. I'm not, I'm not thrilled with it. Um. But a backdoor flush draw and some backdoor straight draw possibilities. I think we go eight hundred and eighty. We just use a small sizing to try to fold out some, if it's ace highs and shit like that. So, or his hands suggest c-bet range on this driver board. And Ad Rock says, fold? Yeah, we absolutely should be fold. We absolut- we absolutely can fold and it's not a mistake.
I'm going one point one. I'm going one point one.
You're going one point one?
Yep.
You've taken this shit before, man.
Nope, out of position. I would take one point one here all the time. For all the reasons that Cyrus said that he's flating, I am re-betting. Absolutely. Hook says fold, but re-raise one point one. Uh, we're fold or re-raise to one point one, but overall profound, more profound is to fold.
So, Ad Rock says fold. So if we do go, damn, think about the price we're gonna be giving him, he's gonna be getting three to one. If we go eight hundred. So we'd have to go one point one, yeah. If we go eight eighty, he's gonna be getting like three to one.
Yep.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta go big if we do.
Yep.
Fuck, yeah, I, I, I agree with it.
And I did take this once before, but I really don't remember it at all. At all.
Okay.
And Assassin's Auto, so it's even hard to remember that guy, like.
What is rationality between some of these situations? So if we bet, we gotta make it a mill. Hans Loro says, Ad Rock says, fold? Yeah, yeah, could fold.
He's betting a third pot here, so he doesn't have to be strong.
I mean, it's a real, I mean, he's betting range on king seven three, it's dry A, F. Alright, one point one. You gonna do something?
I see folds, I see folds, I see check calls. No one is doing one point one but me, but. I wanna go one point one so bad. Nudist is one point one, there he is.
It'd be sweet if Alex just plays this super straightforward and folds and hands over. He has done that to me a couple times in some of these quizzes, like, I think he's gonna get all fancy and shit, and he's like, nope, a, a stute fold.
This guy is nitty as hell. But he, I mean, even, I think even the nitty as hell is gonna c-bet us king seven three.
Yeah, one point one, I'm convinced.
Me too.
Fold or raise to one point one is good, the other two are super bad. Calling, yeah, I agree, I agree. Alright, let's do it.
If you said fold, obviously, check holding nine high out of position is not a bad play, but in this particular situation, we call. And the turn comes the three of spades. Do you want to check? That's three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. Do you wanna bet seven hundred thousand, seven hundred? Or do you wanna bet eight sixty-six, seven hundred?
It's funny.
Alright, so. Alright, yeah, I'm here. I was just waiting for, uh.
So he liked the check raise, we got a good score on that one. Uh, but the funny thing about it is, uh. He flatted, and so now we're in a really weird spot. So this is where shit goes off the rails.
Alright, I think, uh, we lead.
I think he leads too.
No, I mean, we studied, I mean, I don't know. Well, I wanted to give chat a chance, uh, to kinda say something, but I know. We've went over this spot, we've talked about these kinda spots a lot. Yeah, he just called. Yeah, he did.
He just called in game, so that puts us into a different spot than what we would do had we raised, right?
Yeah. What up, Roscoe the River? Thank you for that follow, buddy. So what do you guys like in this spot? Here are options three, 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 seven, 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 eight, six, six, or check.
I got a couple, I got a seven, seven, seven and two eight sixty-six.
Eight sixty-six, huh?
I have some thoughts, but I'm gonna let the chat come in here a little bit first. Cyrus had eight sixty-six. So I got three eight six sixes. Two seven, seven, sevens and a blocker.
Yeah, I'm very close between seven seventy. Eh, and eight six six. One of these two bets for me feel like the best. I don't know if. Hero, when he does decide to float this board, would wanna just check, give up. We have a lot of threes in our range. Uh, he still just has random hands to just c-bet at this point, less threes now that there's a three on the board. Uh, I mean, when a board pairs like this, you know, I know we studied this and we like betting in some cases. This spot, we just have no equity. Um, I'm leaning towards going eight sixty-six or seven seventy, fuck. We got one eight sixty-six, you know, here. Ad Rock says you pretty much have to lead, you have so many threes in our range, correct?
Yes, and we get everything above a nine that is better than us right now to fold. You know, and we can get some sevens to fold. Although I don't think we would do this if we had a king. Check call king, lead turn, doesn't seem like a king move.
But we should, I mean, we should at some ca- in some cases as well, when a three, when the three comes, so. We should be leading a lot of our range in this spot when a board pairs.
Uh, Mickey asks a three, three, three bet does anything? I agree it does not.
Hmm, torn. Rust says seven seventy. Gosh. Alright, boys. No, I mean, it feels like we're guessing. I can't really think of, uh. A logical reason why one size would be much better than the other, other than we just utilize a little bit more. Fold equity going a hair bigger, but both bets probably yield practically the same result, it feels like. When they're so close. Which would let me lead, me to go a little bit smaller, to save chips when we do get called.
I'm going bigger because I watched the Jonathan Little webinar this week, and it was specifically about check call flop. Lead turn, and he says bet big on turn. Bet big on river. So that's kinda what I'm thinking here.
Right. Because, I mean, he's still gonna continue if we go seven seventy with, we're gonna keep in all of his under pairs, a seven X and some ace. Highs maybe as well? So we would wanna bet big and then bet big again, um, okay.
I'd go, I would go, I would go eight sixty-six. Um, I think we each got eight sixty-six as a lead in my chat.
So we got two seventy-seven, two seven seventies and two eight six six, cuz I'm eight six six, I'm team eight six six kind of as well.
Says, remember this guy's deer in headlights. Agreed, that's why I agree. A lead, I just think three, three, three doesn't do much. And so it's seven seventy, eight sixty-six for sure. I'm not a half on that.
Yeah. Hey, ya, ya.
Now eight sixty-six definitely in lead for my chat.
Yeah, he check called, and now you would wanna bet big, or would you? Ah, man, I'm so torn because we would go sev- uh, seven seventy looks more valuey, but eight sixty-six?
You also are less comfortable with the bigger bets on it, like, your big bet is smaller than my big bet.
I mean, I overbet.
Not that you don't overbet, just in general, your big bet is smaller than my big bet.
True. I mean, I'm more pure sixty, where you might be sixty-six, uh, seventy-five.
I have more overbets in general than you.
Yeah, fair enough. Um, he check called. Alright, let's do it. Uh, I don't, I think I'm gonna go with the boys. Yeah, well, I got two seven seventies. I'm about to go, I'm about to be, go from deer in headlights to headlights and deer.
To deer in the windshield.
To deer. Alright, let's do it, boys.
Our hero here let out eight hundred and sixty-six, and it did work. Let me break down what he did here, which I really liked. Uh, first of all, if you just said fold to the flop c-bet, that's fine. But there's opportunities here if you think the guy's chicken ass, right? And there's a lot of guys that get heads up in a tournament and they're just not ready for that moment. And. I have gotten away with some absurd things at final tables. I don't normally consider myself all that aggressive of a player. When it, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, sure, I was aggressive. Uh, because back then people would fold top pair if you tripled, so it was kinda silly not to be aggressive. Uh, eventually, everybody learned to hit the call button versus me. Uh, not really a good idea. Uh, to keep blocking at that point, although I did try for a few years. And, uh, but I remember I got to, uh, my W coop final table, I think that was the W coop. The scoop? Anyway, it was a one K, and it was the last tournament of that series. And everybody was playing it, and it was seven in the morning in Costa Rica. And everybody just wasn't ready for the moment, and I got to play like a bat out of hell. At that final table, I stood up for the entire final table, uh, to keep myself awake, and I just got away with murder. And I hadn't been able to play like that for years, but when everybody's looking at payout jobs and they're freaked out, you can get away with that. And there's a lot of moments here where you can make a couple bucks. So let's, let's say on this flop, let's say on this flop, you actually, let me show you what's going on here. First things first, is most guys are not going to defend with, I'm just gonna do this myself. Most guys are not going to defend with high cards in a heads up match. At the end of a ten dollar tournament when they have never gotten this far before. Some guys will, some guys won't. But this guy has been playing like a deer in the headlights, right? So, let's just take a look at what's going on here. So on this flop, we think he's raising this range, he's probably raising a little wider, but we'll just give him that, be careful. So, king of clubs, seven hearts, three of diamonds, we put out there. And what we're gonna find is, he doesn't have a pair here fifty-six percent of the time. So if you just said lead seventy-seven K, seven hundred and seventy-seven K on this flop, I actually think that's a fine move. That bet needs to work forty-six, forty-seven percent of the time. Almost assuredly, you're getting a fold fifty-six percent of the time. That's totally fine. That ain't half pot, I think you start getting the ace highs to call you down. Same thing with, uh, third pot, so those were red herrings, those weren't real. Uh, you weren't supposed to pick those. Once you check. This was a very advanced play, which he called and led here. Now, if you said check raise on this flop, I actually think that's fine as well, cuz he's most likely c-betting every single hand in his range. Which means he still has nothing, right? But our hero here did something, which is, he said, look, I gotta. Yeah, I got some backdoors, I got a backdoor flush, I got a backdoor straight draw, maybe instead of check raising, I'll call and I'll leave the turn. And normally, if you're playing one, two at the flamingo, you might not wanna do that, cuz people just kinda get pissy. On the turn, and it, they go, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call just to see what you do on the river. If it's forty bucks or something they can part with, in an MTT where they're afraid to look dumb, and the guy's already looked like he's deer in the headlights. At minimum, we can assume he's probably folding high cards, right? So this turn card comes out, and it doesn't help our hand, but it actually makes it less likely he has anything. So let me show you that. So, he c-bets everything on his board, so we're gonna take all these hands. He c-bets all of them, and on the turn, the turn's the three of spades. And now, we give him any, any pair. Now he's got nothing fifty-nine percent of the time. That three made it less likely, obviously, it's less likely he has a three now. Because we just removed one from the deck. So, our hero here leaves eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred. Which needs to work. Eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred. Divided by two, three, two, zero, one, zero. It needs to work, um, I did that wrong. Oh no, I did it. Yeah, it's a little over half pot. So yeah, it needs to work thirty-seven percent of the time. So, our buddy here needs to defend sixty-three percent of the time, which means he's gonna need to dig. Uh, he's at forty-one, he's gonna need to dig into a lot of these ace highs guys. That is a big ask of a guy who is at the final table of a tournament. That maybe he's played once a day for years and he's never gotten this far, because that is something a lot of regs do. You know, they play while they're studying, or they, they play while they're at their store or something like that. But, uh, and then they're finally there, and it's like, oh my god, don't make a dumb mistake. And don't make a dumb mistake, turns into, you just fold your high card suit, and then that becomes a point of exploitation for us. And that's exactly what happened here.
Boom.
Um, so, I'm confused.
Why?
Because I bet the eight sixty-six and got one point.
You got one, I bet, uh. I bet the seven seventy and got eight.
Yeah, so, but he bet that in game and then talked about how the quarter pot was a red herring, we weren't supposed to pick that. But that was ten. So I'm not sure if there's an error in the quiz with the points, or if we blew it. I'm not sure. Cause he did what we said to do, and then said the three thirty-three was a red herring, you weren't supposed to pick that. Weird.
Yeah, I don't, uh, yeah, I'm trying to decipher why he wanted, why three, three, three is the best score. It feels like seven seventy or eight sixty-six are the two best. And a three, three, three just has less fold equity. But it only, I think it's because a three, three, three just doesn't need to work as often. But it does work versus this guy who's over folding, this spot not calling. So he was saying, like, eight sixty-six needs to work like thirty-seven percent of the time.
And then he was gonna have to dig really deep to get that.
Well, yeah, because he's folding sixty percent of the time, whereas if you bet, you know, three, three, three. Um, it doesn't need to work as often, and this guy's probably still folding that same range.
He said it was a red herring.
Yeah, I don't know, I think, I think it's a typo in the, uh, the quiz.
I'm putting this one, I'm putting this one in the D C dot com discord. What was your score? I got ten, 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 one.
I got thirty-eight. I got an eight on the last one.
Yeah, you crushed that one.
Oh, you're waiting for me?
Um, you got time for the cash game one?
Are you coming or should I go?
Mrs. Sixes. Is in there laying another lot.
Yeah, we're about to take the kid somewhere, so I gotta finish up. I've been, we've been doing this for much longer than I thought we would be doing this today.
Ten minutes longer than usual. You wanna do one more quiz, or you wanna call?
Uh, let's do one real quick.
Alright, let's do the cash one, four fifty-four.
Don't tell my wife. Let's go.
You sound like me when I'm shooting whiskey on stream. We're going to four fifty-four.
Alright, let's go. Two, five, uh, cash game, uh, let's do it, hundred and twenty bigs deep.
And Evan Jarvis, so this is way out of what I normally do. Let's check it out.
Alright, I'm gonna start it over, you ready?
Yep, ready.
Hey, everyone, this is Evan Jarvis for PokerCoaching dot com. Today, we are reviewing a two, five, no limit hand from Casino Rama. Uh, this is a nine-handed table, and we have reads on a few of the players in play. I'll let you see what they are as the hand progresses. So first position, Young Gun from the tournament earlier in the day limps in. I played with this kid in the tournament and won either four out of four or five out of five hands against him. So I had kind of, um, a psychological advantage that I was holding over him a bit. He would raise every time it was folded to him in late position, and whether I won the pot by three betting and c-betting, or defending and check raising, or defending and leading out. I won pretty much every hand we played. Uh, then we have a recreational player who's on a half stack who limps in. Hijack also limps, and it's on you on the button with three limbs ahead of you. What do you do? Do you fold ten eight? Do you call with ten eight offsuit? Do you raise two twenty, or do you raise two sixty?
Sorry, since he doesn't know, he doesn't do cash. Um, Smash, thank you for that follow. I don't have any passwords, I don't know why anyone's coming to meet for the password today. I never had a Saturday home game, even when I had it. But uh.
Yep.
You're the third person. Um everyone talking about mama sixes landing smackdown.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I should not be here right now, so I gotta kind of fly through this. I'm just gonna open up here. Uh we could easily just fold this in position, playing our button, I think we wanna call.
Me too.
We, I, I'd rather use something with more playability even on the button to squeeze with. Um I don't hate it because he says he has a psychological advantage, he thinks he can just own this cat. So I don't hate it, you know, we do squeeze the money in the middle, we get it heads up with the under the gun razor a lot. Uh so if I am gonna raise, I'm just gonna make it sixty, twenty does nothing, it's just a pot sweetener with this much out there. So I'm either going sixty or call, probably leaning more towards sixty if he has a read on this guy. Especially in cash, cause these guys are just over limping a lot, then we're gonna be in weird spots. So I don't hate sixty.
Yeah, Mick says twenty, Tex says sixty, Marlon says sixty. I mean, I don't think we're getting squeezed here all that much. I mean, I'm a pure call here, but everybody in my chat says sixty. I'm not the cash game guy.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a great combo, um but it also isn't uh. Gonna be a great combo, it's not suited or anything, when we over limp, we're gonna be dominated by better tens a lot. Getting it heads up and playing the button feels like it's gonna be ideal.
Yeah, and you are in position, so it's, it can't be too bad of a mistake to raise.
Right, right, right. Alright, so I'm gonna go with raise sixty.
Alright.
Um let's do it.
I guess we are too, cause everyone in my chat said that, I would be calling a hundred percent.
Alright, do it.
This is a spot where you could go a lot of ways with this hand. Um the hand's definitely strong enough. And flops well enough to overcall and play on the button. It does dominate some of the weaker eights, like eight, seven suited, eight, nine suited, eight, six suited. Um although the ten is kind of a troublesome hand, troublesome card dominated by ten, nine, jack, ten, queen, ten, king, ten, ace, ten. So a lot of the Broadway hands that may be limping in here have us in bad shape, which is why um calling is reasonable. But it's a bit of a dangerous option and we have to play very conservatively if we opt to call. Folding is also fine, it's not a ultra premium hand, but we do have the button, we do have deep stacks. And it's probably better to play the hand than to not play it. So in terms of raising options, raising to twenty to kind of like do a pot sweetener bet. Doesn't really make sense with this hand. If we had a stronger hand, like a jack, ten suited or an ace, ten suited or a pocket eights. Or something that, you know, flops very well and dominates a lot of the other speculative hands that are in there, a small raise makes sense. But with this hand that's, you know, it's playable but kind of trashy. I think making a raise size that knocks out a lot of the hands that have us in bad shape is actually much more preferable. So this is a move that I learned from Alex Fitzgerald and it's when there's a lot of dead money ahead of you. Make a raise size that will force your opponents to fold the majority of your hand, their hands. And give you the best chance of playing the pot heads up in position. So I made it sixty here. I've also seen this play executed very well by a guy named Elliot Smith, kind of a big deal. And this Asian pro in the big blind who I played with in the tournament, who's just one of those guys who wants to see every flop he can. Really hates to fold, but plays well selectively post-flop he calls. Which starts the calling train, the young gun from the MTT calls and the rec player on the short stack calls. Now we see the flop four ways, pretty dry, pretty rainbow, nine, five, three, pretty low. Checks to us in position and what do you do? Two fifty in the middle, five forty behind, three players in the mix, nine, five, three board, do you check? Bet a third of the pot for eighty, bet half the pot for one twenty, or bet three quarters for one eighty?
All right. Ooh, Ally, what's up guys? Thank you for coming by.
You hear me?
Yeah.
Alright, so yeah, pre flop, I, I, I agree, um especially we know this guy raising, limping pretty wide. Now, this is very interesting here, um post flop.
It is, because I don't like to see that personally multi-way.
But this board's so dry, um we would think that any overpair in, at, in this point would be raising. We block a lot of nine X, uh we can actually turn some straight draws, we still rep overpairs. I'm just torn between sizing between one twenty and one eighty personally.
I have sixty, sixty, one eighty, one twenty, one thirty.
But the thing is, I believe somebody may have a pair here, we block some of the good nine X, like do we call the suited nine tens, the suited. Uh eight nines and things like that, hold on.
We also block the gutters, uh the seven eights, the ten or seven eights and I guess shit.
Yeah, but yeah, I, I just think uh overpair, you know, we can uh, they'd cap themselves by not having too many overpair. Yes, they can have sets, um but sixes, sevens, fours, we can put a lot of pressure on in future streets. I'd probably go uh in this spot. Half pot might get, be good enough here and then uh finding a lot of cards to barrel on. Where we pick up equity or that are just good for our range in general on turns. So yeah, I think, I think that'd be one twenty, I mean, this is just ca- so countered in tournaments. But uh yeah, I'm, I'm about to pick an option here really soon.
I got two one twenties and two one eighties. I hope he's gonna check, I would check a lot myself, like I would check this a lot. If I was gonna bet, it was gonna be eighty. For me.
I think for me, I'm betting one twenty, eighties, no, I'm, I'm going one twenty, I think, one twenty or one eighty. It feels like we get the same thing accomplished and the goal would be here to find double barrels on cards that are good for. Actually, we pick up equity or good for our range, so um for me, I think in cash, when we're this multi-way, eighty would just. Be setting money on fire.
Well, I'm gonna do eighty and then bomb a shit of the turns.
Yeah.
There's that.
Right.
If I go one twenty here, my bomb on the turn is on like.
Rest us, rest donuts is one eighty. Um yeah, I'm ready to run it.
Cool.
Alright, cool.
Now normally, I don't love to fire a continuation bet into multiple players. And generally, the more players that see the flop, the less inclined I am to fire a continuation bet. But that said, this board is very dry and very tough to hit, it does not connect with any of the Broadway range. And also I think we're gonna get more credit on, for having a strong hand if we fire a continuation bet into multiple players. So I think that gives some merit to betting. Um but we wanna choose the right size if we are gonna bet. Checking is um an obvious play to make with three other players out there. We've completely whiffed, we didn't get the pot heads up, it's the conservative route and we can still check and maybe improve. Uh with a jack, a queen, a seven, a six on the turn, there's lots of cards that could improve us. And we don't mind seeing a free turn and maintaining position, getting more information. If we are to bet, I think we wanna choose a size that will definitely fold out all floats. And I don't think eighty accomplishes that, eighty might even get curious calls from, you know, ace high gut shots and stuff. Whereas a half pot bet, I think will fold out all the overcards and only get us peeled by nine X. And pocket pairs between the nine and the five. Three quarter pot will also fold out those same hands, but we risk an extra sixty dollars to do so. I think we'll get the same amount of fold with the half pot bet as we will the three quarters while risking less. And so for those reasons, I opt to make it about half pot here. Asian pro thinks about it for a long time and folds, young gun from the MTT calls reasonably quickly. And the recreational player folds and I'm thinking, well, I'm probably done with this hand. Unless I get a really good turn card or improve and that's exactly what happens, ace of spades on the turn. We now have five hundred in the middle and three hundred left behind, young gun checks, action is on you, what should you do? Should you check, bet one fifty, bet two fifty, or go all in?
What are you guys doing?
Alright.
Interesting, cause this happened, like we got called and I'm like, oh jam, we, we're all bets on the turn, I kinda said before it was a jam. Um I got a bunch of jams in my chat, I'm jamming.
Yeah, I think I'm jamming as well. Um putting two fifty out there, we may get the same response. Um you know, and then just save money behind and our bet looks like it really wants more action. Uh when we go two fifty, this maximizes fold equity, I actually think in the cash game, we might wanna go two fifty here. And get the same response and look like that, but two fifty leaves him one twenty five behind, it does save us money, but yeah, um maybe we just go all in. I'm sorry, I'm in a rush.
No worries, I'm, everyone in mine is jamming, wanna jam?
Just do it.
In situations like these, I like to ask myself, what would I do if I actually had it? If I actually had the ace, what would I do? Or if I actually had, you know, a big pair, what would I do or a set? And the answer in those spots is that I would usually check. If I have a big pocket pair that's below the ace, I'm going to check. To kinda control the pot size a little bit and give myself the best chance of getting paid by a worse pair. Um if I have an ace, given that we have, you know, two thirds pot behind. I know that I can get all in by the river anyway, so I'm going to check back to induce some bluffs from my opponent. And if I have a set somehow, um it's kind of the same situation. I don't need to build a pot anymore, the pot's already pretty big, so I would probably check. The ironic thing is, because it's a really good card to bet into, there's not gonna be a lot of ace high hands that he floats the flop with. It's only uh ace three suited, ace five suited, ace nine suited that he has. And every other hand is not too happy about seeing an ace. They're gonna be pretty concerned about an ace and I can definitely have lots of ace X in my range after having made it so big pre flop. So it makes sense for me to have the ace, but it doesn't make that sense for me to bet it. Which is funny, because if I was bluffing, this is a card I'd really like to bet on, you know, old me would just fire away on the ace turn. But I think it's a little bit too obvious. So if I am to bet here. I wanna bet an amount that looks like I'm trying to bring him along for the ride, I'm trying to milk him in. And I think that bet size is about a third of the pot, so one fifty here. I think one fifty folds out a lot of the hands um that I'm looking to knock out of the pot, any pair below a nine. And it accomplishes it with less risk. Betting two fifty will get the same folds as the one fifty. I think even going all in will get the same folds as the one fifty, but I risk a lot more and I lose a lot more when he doesn't fold those hands. Or he has a better hand than that. So for those reasons, I like checking the most with betting small. As the second most favorable option. And even though I am bluffing with this hand. I felt that my bluff's gonna look a lot more credible if I check back and wait till the river to bet. And so I check, river is an eight, making me a pair. And the young I'm from the MTT checks to me, action is on you, you've rivered some showdown value, what should you do? Should you check, bet a hundred and fifty, bet two hundred and fifty, or go all in?
Yeah, the volume is low, cause the video is below J P G, um and these videos are better. I know what I'm doing, what are you guys doing? Hook is checking. Ding. I mean, I would play this hand so much differently, I would check flop, bet turns and then do what I'm gonna do now on the river, I don't wanna give it away. Or if I bet the flop, I would bet smaller and then bomb turn. And then that way it doesn't commit me to going all in, I spend the same amount.
I really.
Red the ace.
Love, love, love the way he broke down his line on the turn. It, I just love like what he said about his range and how he would, how it interacts with how he would wanna play it. Like checking back, he would be checking back some of his aces, guys can have sets in his range and then, you know, we don't get all of our value upfront. Because there's not enough value hands in his range that can call us. Um so when we have a lot of every strong hands, we would check here and then. Bet value, uh bet rivers as well.
I agree with all that, I just think I would get here differently personally.
Yeah, say, I mean, I'm always going sixty pre, I like that a lot, uh with the dynamic he said and the sizing and everything. Um but uh yeah, in this spot, I'm not exactly sure if we need to turn our hand into a bluff to make a nine fold. Uh uh it's either go all in or check, I don't know if any of the intermediate bets accomplish anything. It feels like either we need to turn our hand into a bluff, what do you guys think? We have showdown value. Um to make nine X fold and we block enough nine X that we beat the hands between a five and a seven, those pairs are ready. Ace is never folding, so maybe we just take our showdown on at this point.
Everyone in my chat says check. I would be checking too.
Alright, yeah, I think we check.
Bluffing everything, but we got showdown value, now we beat all those under pairs.
Any, anyone else have a different line? I think my wife left me, oh no, no, I'm kidding, I think they, I think they left without me. Um but yeah, I think we just check here uh with this amount, uh it, it's, I'm torn between trying to make a nine X fold. But uh yeah, we beat enough hands now uh that we just check.
I don't know if we're gonna have nines to fold.
Yeah. Alright, I'm checking, you ready?
He said she would call me with J hi, smart. Checking.
Given that we have rivered a, a pair of eights and we now beat sevens and sixes. Checking and taking our showdown value definitely has merit. Uh we limit our losses in the cases that he has a nine that he didn't wanna fold or if he somehow has a better hand than that. My thinking on the turn was that it's still possible for him to have really nailed this board. Uh when he calls on the flop. But once I check the turn, if he actually has two pair or better, he's probably gonna bet it himself on the river. And I can get that information from him, whereas by betting the turn, I would have been betting with less information and could run up against a real hand more easily. So once he checks to me on the river, I think that his range is capped at a pair of nines. And although I've rivered a pair of eights, I don't beat that pair of nines, which is a good chunk of his range. Um also, if I bet instead of checking, I'm still gonna win the pot against those sixes and sevens. The same way I would uh if I checked, but also now I have the chance to win the pot against the part of his range. That is the stronger part, which is that nine X part of his range. So I think this is a spot where I can get him to fold pretty much every hand that he has. And while it includes some hands that I would beat at showdown, I beat those hands anyway by betting and I also win the pot against additional hands by betting. Um now how much to bet? That is the question. I think that a one fifty bet, it looks milky. But it also might get that pot odds call, cause he's getting four to one on a call. And I, I don't know if he had reloads with him. But that makes a bigger bet more valuable, because if he doesn't have reloads with him and he wants to keep playing. He's gonna wanna keep that three twenty five on the table. So I like a big bet here. Um once I saw the ace on the turn, that was my plan, was to represent it, but in a way that's credible. So I bet two hundred and eighty five. It wasn't quite all in, it was a little less than all in, but I felt that betting that specific amount was gonna look a little bit stronger than a round number. And a little bit stronger than the words all in, because I so particularly chose the bet size that I wanted. And action came back to him and he folded. So this was a pretty sweet hand that I was able to win with some well timed aggression and some well selected bet size. And the most important part of the hand honestly was the sizing I chose pre flop, where I started to represent a really strong hand. Took it in position, was willing to not just barrel away in the chances that my opponents had a really strong hand. But used my position to acquire more information, so I could make a very specific wager on the river. Knowing the chances and the likelihood of getting called, which I thought in this spot were very low. And uh took down a nice pot with a bluff.
Marlon's is really conflicted in his hand, I have two. Waiting for sixes.
Let's go baby, the spaz out shove.
So I.
I shoved down the river.
I have follow up questions. Like when we, when we bet the two fifty like he did and the guy's got one twenty five behind, are we calling a jam? How do we fold?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I picked jam, I thought jam was the best option. Like I spazed out at the end, it's like, it just makes like, he just has enough nine X and when we take the line we took on the turn. in pre-flop, I think we would, we can just shove. I think it's just conducive with him repping of every strong hand, and if he does shove over the top of it, we just are never head.
I mean, I'll never fold. Uh, it depends on what you're playing, cuz I am a Young Gun MTT player. Well, maybe not so young.
Well, dude, I mean.
I'm never folding nine here, that's me.
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, you might, dude. I mean, his range.
Never.
It's light.
You check the turn, I'm never folding nine. So again, it's, it's against my player, right? I guess.
I think.
More aggressive from this guy? Or I'm a little more sticky?
Well, I I, I think an ace can credibly check here and then balance that check and then bet rivers and.
I don't disagree with all the logic about checking the ace on the turn. I just think I'm gonna, I'm gonna bounce.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like, I, I think, I, I think I would prefer a shove over that bet, but uh, yeah. So I did at the last second pick shove because it just makes sense to, if we're taking the line where we go that big pre, and then we bet flop big, and I, I just think we um, we follow through and jam, make some nine-X fold. Even though it's a small, small percentage of his range, I think we just follow through with our story and finish up. Finish the hand off, honestly. When he checks twice, like he said, he never has a lot of very strong hands. Cuz he would be betting this two pairs and sets on river, so he's pretty capped to some one pair and most likely a nine. So I would just really target that shit. And our eight has some showdown value, but at the same time, um, our overall range is still very strong here.
Yeah, Martin says, what ace to check the turn? He's asking you. I would say that uh, there's, oh, he explained well why he checked the turn because said when he checked the turn with an ace, all of the underpairs just folded, doesn't get any value. So he was being sneaky that way. So I, I have seen that logic. I would bet again, uh, and I would bet small. I would go small, small, big. By the name.
Well, yeah, I don't think small bet on a flop. I mean, this is cash. This is not, your small bets are just getting floated. People are stubborn. People are, people are just too rich to fold. I don't even know.
Boom turns a lot. So here, I would go small, flop, bomb the turn, and obviously taking it down cuz he folded this one.
Yeah, that's, that's a mind frame. Yeah, that's a mind frame from tournaments, and I think we wanna bet big on flop because we would wanna get value on this board from a lot of their pairs. It's not like we wanna, like, when we go big here, they're gonna continue still uh, with a, a lot of pairs and shit, so if we, we do have value hands, we wouldn't wanna go small.
I also think a Young Gun MTT player would call a lot of these bets with a nine, like specifically a young MTT player.
Right, but.
But we do have, um, and what aces do we check the turn with that we bomb river? Like, I'll give you an example, Martin. What if you had?
You know what's nice? We don't have to show them.
Oh, I guess it's a limp lot. Jacks.
Good point.
Tens. Um, something like that.
Yeah. But um, I gotta get out of here. Um, but yeah, I'm gonna say thank you, guys. We'll be back next Saturday. This was fun. Uh, thank you, guys, for interacting and, you know, making this fun for us and letting us know what you think about these hands. Certainly makes it a lot more enjoyable. Remember, check this shit out for free, guys. Absolutely free. We've said it a bunch. We're not gonna beat a dead horse, but use those links and our chat, myself and Big God's Big Toe Chat, exclamation point PC. And uh, yeah, we're gonna both be back tomorrow with massive Sunday streams. Thank you, guys, for hanging out.
Yeah, uh, absolutely, guys. Put the link above our chats for ya. Make sure you click them. We'll be back. I also record these and put them on the YouTube channel if you missed them. Um, so you can watch the replay on YouTube, and we'll have a what would you do with that Jack ten suited all-run IC, might as well. Be a fun little game to play. Thanks, my man Sixes. Uh, stay tuned in my chat. I owe you guys a giveaway from last week. And then I don't know what the giveaway is for this week.
Yeah, we'll have to figure it out. I've really gotta run my wife's. I'm gonna drop this shit.
And uh, Sixes and I'll figure out who owes who money.
Alright, we'll do, buddy. See ya.
Alright, guys. And let me hang up on these sixes call. Uh, cool. So let's run this giveaway. I already had it. The what you gotta do is type exclamation point ticket, space, one hundred. Everyone can enter. There is no cost. I am gonna run that giveaway now. And then I'm gonna draw two winners. Uh, ticket space max. There you go. I guess that works too. Everyone getting in on the giveaways. I'm gonna reach out to Sixes real quick and ask who he's hosting. Get in there, get in there, get in there, get in there. Don't forget to click on PC.com link to get your free signup, twenty quizzes. Uh, let me pull up while I'm waiting for this to run a little bit. What we get here? I got some, some banners. So for the free, it says signup for free, five-hundred plus quizzes, forty-plus webinars. I think they alternate is why that says that. Um, if you sign up for the premium, you can get a free master class. You sign up for premium, it's seventy-plus coaching classes, monthly webinars, free bonus, the Cash Game Master Class, and seventy-plus coaching classes. But if you sign up for you, you get twenty quizzes and a bunch of homeworks. Um, I have quizzes on there. And uh, Sixes has quizzes on there and all the other coaches. Hope you thanks for hanging out, buddy, and hope to see ya next week. Alright, looks like we got everyone who's getting in the giveaway. Who's going to get in the giveaway? We're gonna close it out, and the winner is, bang, Nutist gets ten dollars and bang, Mrs. Ally Q gets the ten dollars, guys. Some of your uh, screen names, I see, I will ship that over you today. Congratulations, guys. Uh, thanks again. Make sure you click the follow button. Make sure you tune in tomorrow. We are playing Big Sunday. We're gonna play all the big stuff. All the guarantees going after all the money, starting at noon Pacific. So that's what, three Eastern. Tune in for that. Thanks for hanging out. Um, Sixes, tell me who's gonna host? It was a DJ, and that's who I was gonna host too. Um, so I'm gonna send it over his way, and uh, yeah, guys, I will see you tomorrow. Where is Dramatic DJ? That's it. Peace.